The meeting will come to order. I'd ask that everyone make their way to their seats so that we may begin the meeting. Looks like you folks had plenty of time to get to your seats, so please rise if you are able so the Minutemen, uh, the Wilmington Minutemen will present our nation's colors. Ladies and gentlemen, can you please now join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ladies and gentlemen, I would request that you stay standing if you are able in a moment of silence for those men and women who have served our country, for those overseas who safe return we await, and for those who we have lost this year who have served the town of Wilmington, including Salvador R. Albano, Phyllis M. Allen, Donna M. Alanardo, Alfred V. Antonorelli, Senior, Donald C. Armstrong, Carl A. Backman, Junior, Robert F. Barrett, Donna R. Bowden, Richard S. Capone, Jean M. Crane, Charlotte S. DiMarco, Henry S. Dambowski, Maria V. Fernandini, Margaret L. Fleming, Kevin B. Harrington, Matthew J. Kane, Junior, Marjorie Lampkin, Michael N. Matt, Penelope L. McGary, Linda T. McMenamin, Francis P. Nolan, James T. O'Conners, Shirley B. O'Donnell, Adele C. Passmore, Beverly A. Shea, Maureen T. Sheehan, Dolores E. Silva, Mary Thiel, Dee Anne Whitney. Please remain standing as the colors exit the hall. My thank you to the Wilmington Minutemen for helping preserve our history and making it a part of our annual town meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, you may be seated. Welcome to the Joanne M. Benton Auditorium at Wilmington High School for the 2023 Annual Town Meeting. Our open town meeting, the most direct form of democracy, meets today, and you, the registered voters of the town of Wilmington, are going to make a lot of important decisions here today to direct your town government over the course of the next year. A few announcements before we get started. Individuals are not permitted to bring any food or drink into the auditorium, but the Wilmington Public Schools Coral and Theater Support Group, CATS, will be selling food and drink in the cafeteria. Bathrooms are located outside of the auditorium to the rights of the doors that you entered the building through. If you do use the bathroom, please take your voting card with you so that we know that you have already checked in. Additionally, for individuals who have signed up in advance, there are student volunteers from the high school providing childcare during the course of this meeting. I want to express my gratitude for those student volunteers for making it possible for many of you to attend as it helps enable more residents to participate in our democratic process. Everyone should have the Purple Finance Committee Recommendations booklet, which contains the warrant for today's town meeting, and a letter from the moderator, which contains the proposed consent agenda. Throughout the entrance to the auditorium, there are posters hanging up that include a QR code. A QR code is a black and white square object that looks a little bit like a barcode. If you point your smartphone camera at the QR code, a link will pop up, which will bring you to the page, a page on the town's website that contains the warrant and other materials relevant to today's proceedings. At this town meeting, in addition to complying with the laws of Commonwealth of Massachusetts and Wilmington inhabitant bylaws, we will use the same rules we use at every town meeting. If you wish to speak on the merits of an article, I'd ask that you approach one of the four microphones placed in the aisles of the auditorium, and I will call on those whom I see first at the microphones. Please identify your name and address so we may accurately report minutes of today's meeting. All motions or amendments having to do with the expenditures of money or the amendment of any bylaw must be presented to me in writing, and those are Articles 3 through 40, 42, 45, 46, and 47. So if you are making a motion on those articles or planning on amending a motion on those articles, I will need to see those in writing. The maker of the main motion can have up to 10 minutes for comments. All of the speakers can have up to five minutes during discussion on a main motion. If you hear me tapping on the microphone, that is your cue that there is 30 seconds remaining and to begin to wind down your comments. No person may speak twice on the same question except to correct a mistake or make an explanation. Articles 1 through 40 and 46 will be taken up in order, with the exception of the articles contained in the consent agenda should that be the desired course of the meeting. I will ask for a brief recess after the last article taken sequentially, so Article 46, before moving on to random draw. Article 45, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, and 47 will be taken up randomly. Non-voters should have a yellow lanyard and should be seated in the section to my right, your left. Voters should have a purple voter card, which should be displayed for any standing votes so that the tellers can count you. Tellers sitting in front, I would ask that you, if you notice any of the individuals to my right or left and wish to speak, please wave or somehow get my attention in case my peripheral vision fails me. If you are not sure what we are voting on, please rise to make a point of order. I want to make sure that everyone is well aware of what we are voting on throughout the course of this meeting. Most importantly, we will deal with each other respectfully even where there may be issues where there is disagreement. We understand that not everyone feels the same way about all issues, however, we do want people to feel comfortable participating in town meetings, sharing opinions, and asking questions. Therefore, like, at this meeting, like all town meetings, we expect people to refrain from personal attacks, discussion not related to the matter at hand, and discussion raised for the sole purpose of disrupting the assembly, and addressing any other member by name with all discussion to be through the moderator. I do want to thank our tellers, the Public Buildings Department, the School Department, the Police and Fire Departments, the IT Department, Town Council, the Town Managers' Office, and the Town Clerks' Office, and all town employees and volunteers who put in work to make today possible. I also want to thank our friends at WCTV who are broadcasting today's meeting for the benefit of viewers at home and recording today for future viewing. Lastly, I want to recognize and thank three longtime volunteers of the town of Wilmington. Robert DePiscuali is the now former Chair of the Housing Authority. Mr. DePiscuali was first appointed to the Housing Authority in 1996 and has been elected to that position since 1998. He decided to seek, not to seek reelection upon the expiration of his most recent term, and I want to thank him for his service to our community. Andrea Hauser of the Sarah D. J. Carter Lecture Fund Committee. Ms. Hauser was first appointed to the Carter Lecture Fund in 1993 and is stepping down after 30 years on the committee. Our thanks to Ms. Hauser for her decades of service to the town of Wilmington. Piscuali Pat Dantonio of the Cemetery Commission. Mr. Dantonio has served on the Cemetery Commission since 2011 and is stepping away after 12 years. Thank you for your service to our community. Here we know objections, I declare that the rules of this meeting will be approved by unanimous consent, and we can begin. Greetings in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and in the manner prescribed by the bylaws of said town. You are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town qualified to vote on town affairs, to meet and assemble at the Beltway School Prescincts 1, 2, and 3, and the Talon Hall Auditorium Prescincts 4, 5, and 6, Saturday, the 26th day of April, AD, 2023, at 7:45 o'clock on the forenoon. The polls to be opened at 8:00 a.m. and shall be closed at 8:00 p.m. for the election of town officers. Ms. Maselli.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the moderator dispense with further reading of the warrant and take up and make reference to each article by number.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded in discussion. Seeing none, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article 1. To bring in your votes on one ballot respectively for the following named offices to win: two select board members for the term of three years, two members of the school committee for the term of three years, and one member of the Housing Authority for the term of five years. You are also hereby further required and directed to notify and warn the said inhabitants of the town of Wilmington who are qualified to vote on elections and town affairs therein, to assemble and subsequently meet in the town meeting at the Wilmington High School Joanne M. Benton Auditorium, Church Street, in said town of Wilmington on Saturday, the 29th day of April, AD, 2023, at 9:00 a.m., then and there to act on the following articles. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my privilege and honor to present to you those individuals that you elected last week to the aforementioned offices. To the Select Board, Frank J. West. Gary B. DePama. To the School Committee, Jennifer Bryson. Michael P. Mercaldi. And to the Housing Authority, Louis Smaglia, IV. Thank you to all of the individuals willing to step forward to put their names on the ballot to work to improve our community. Thank you to those who served in those offices previously, namely Judy O'Connell of the Select Board, Melissa Plowman of the School Committee, and Robert T. Piscuali of the Housing Authority. There is no need for a motion on Article 1, so we move on to Article 2, and at this time we're going to entertain a motion, a procedural mechanism that was introduced to our annual town meeting three years ago. We're going to entertain a consent agenda. The articles contained within the consent agenda are included in the chart contained in my letter at the beginning of your warrant booklet. These are historically non-controversial articles, and they are Articles 2, 4, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13. Mr. Wendell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good morning, everyone. I move that Articles 2, 4, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13 be approved under a single motion by the consent with Article 2 to hear reports. Article 4, approved as written in the warrant. Article 7, funded by taxation in the amount of $50,000. Article 8, funded by the appropriation of Uber and Lyft tax receipts in the amount of Article 9, funded by appropriation from the Peg Access Special Revenue Account in the amount of $500,000. Article 10, funded by taxation in the amount of $50,000. Article 11, funded by taxation in the amount of $8,000. Article 12, funded by taxation in the amount of $1,500. And Article 13, approved as written in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Wendell. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded in discussion. Seeing none, we are going to now vote on the articles contained in the consent agenda with one vote. If you are in favor of the articles contained in the consent agenda, that is Articles 2, 4, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13, as spoken to by Mr. Wendell, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article 3. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the purpose of paying unpaid bills of previous years or taking any other action related there to Mr. Kyra.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the article not be adopted.
Second. Accept that as a motion. Motion has been made and seconded in discussion. Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of not adopting Article 3, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article 4. Article 4 was voted in the affirmative pursuit of the consent agenda, and the moderator will accept that vote of approval. It's a vote taken thereon. Article 5. To see how much the town will vote, will appropriate for the expenses of the town and the salaries of several town offices and departments, and determine how same shall be raised, whether by taxation, transfer from available funds, or otherwise, or take any other action related there to Mr. Dougherty.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I move that the several representative sums of, as recommended and presented by the Finance Committee, be raised from the fiscal year 24 tax levy and other general revenues of the town or by transfer from available funds as may be recommended by the Finance Committee, and be appropriated for the purpose set forth in Article Number 5. Each budget category, including general government, public safety, public works, community development, public buildings, human services, Wilmington School Department, Shoshine Valley Regional Vocational and Technical High School District, maturing debt and interest, unclassified and reserve, and statutory charges, to be taken up and voted on in the order they appear, subject to amendment, and so each budget category not open for reconsideration until the entire budget is voted.
Thank you, Mr. Dougherty. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a procedural vote to take up the budget by category as it appears in your booklet from pages 2 through 9. The amounts that we will be voted on are the amounts listed in the column to the far right. If you adjust to your booklet, the column titled "Recommended Appropriation," Finance Committee recommends approval for each of these categories. Starting with total general government, which is at the bottom of page 3, again to the far right, you'll see the recommended appropriation amount of $3,625,715. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded in discussion. Seeing none, we'll call for the vote for the amount of $3,625,715 for total general government, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted. Next, to pages 4 and 5 for public safety. Total public safety is halfway down on page 5, the amount of $13,274,236. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded in discussion. Seeing no discussion, we'll call for the vote. Total public safety, $13,274,236. If you are in favor of that sum, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Total public works, which begins on page 5 and goes towards the, to the end of page 6, the amount is $7,787,674. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Actually, I'm sorry. Mr. Dougherty, you have a more specific motion I think you want to make.
5A. I move that the sum of $7,787,674 be appropriated for the Department of Public Works, and to, and to meet this appropriation, $20,000 be transferred from the sale of cemetery lots, and the sum of $20,000 be transferred from interest cemetery trust funds, and that both amounts be applied to the line items Personal Services Cemetery full-time, and that the balance of $7,747,674 be raised from fiscal year tax levy and other general revenues of the town.
Accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? $1,045. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion. Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. If you are in favor of $47,658,045 for the Wilmington School Department, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Shoshine Valley Regional Vocational and Technical High School District, in the amount of $7,267,806. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Do I have discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote for Shoshine Valley Regional Vocational and Technical High School District in the amount of $7,267,806. If you are in favor of that sum, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Total maturing debt and interest, Mr. Dougherty.
I move that the sum of $3,517,368 be appropriated for maturing debt and interest, and that to meet this appropriation, the sum of $97,060, $60, be transferred from sewer available funds, and that that sum of $227,580 be transferred from the water department available funds and be applied to the line item maturing debt and interest water, and that the sum of $152,000 be transferred from the water department available funds and be applied to the item maturing debt and interest authorization fees and miscellaneous debt, and that the balance of $3,040,728 be raised from fiscal year 24 tax levy and the, and other general revenues of the town.
Accept that as the main motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded in discussion. Seeing none, if you are in favor of total maturing debt and interest in the amount of $3,517,368 as described by Mr. Dougherty in his motion, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Total unclassified and reserve, again, we're on page 9, Mr. Dougherty.
I move that the sum of $19,48,223 be appropriated for the unclassified and reserve, of which sum of $136,612 be transferred from the water department available funds and be applied to the unclassified and reserve insurance account, and the sum of $299,000 be transferred from the water department available funds and be applied to the unclassified and reserve employee life and health insurance account, and that the sum of $11,749 be transferred from the water department available funds and be applied to the unclassified and reserve Medicare employees contribution amount, and that the sum of $500,000 be transferred from the special reserve available funds and be applied to the unclassified and reserve Peg Cable Access, and that the remaining balance of $18,10862 be raised from fiscal year 24 tax levy and other general revenues of the town.
Accept that as the main motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded in discussion. Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. If you are in favor of $19,48,223 for total unclassified and reserve, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Excuse me. Total statutory charges in the amount of $10,922,27, Mr. Dougherty.
I move that the sum of $10,922,27 be approved for statutory charges, of which the sum of $990,239 be transferred from the water department available funds, the sum of $43,805 be transferred from sewer available funds, and that $28,402 be transferred from special reserve available funds, and the total sum of $918,032 be applied to the statutory charges retirement contribution account, and that the remaining balance of $9,931,786 be raised from the fiscal year tax levy and other general revenues of the town.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded in discussion from the back.
Yeah, I just had a question about the school choice line item. I thought at a school committee meeting, they said it was about $5,000 a student that we would have to pay, or maybe we receive. How many students is that? Because it looks about like half as many kids have chosen to leave Wilmington relative to last year. Is that, am I understanding that correctly? Like it was, we had to pay $114,000 last year in '71. It's about half as many kids are choosing to stay in Wilmington. Is that the correct interpretation?
Try and get an answer for your question, either Mr. Rogiro or Dr. Brand, if you have any insight.
Paul Rogiro, Assistant Superintendent of Administration of Finance. The school choice line item is, I think, the cost of the town for students that choose to go to other districts that have school choice. If Wilmington had school choice, if we brought students in, we would receive, I think, a maximum $5,000 per student.
Okay, so wrong on the number, because that was the wrong one, but correct in interpreting it is, we have a lot more students staying in Wilmington relative to last year, so. I think I got the clarity I needed. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion on total statutory charges. Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. If you are in favor of total statutory charges in the amount of $10,922,27 as described by Mr. Dougherty in his motion, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, it is customary at this time to thank the volunteers of the Finance Committee who sacrificed multiple nights per week from the end of January through mid-March and worked through town meetings scrutinizing the town manager's proposed budget, so that they can make recommendations to the residents here at town meeting. Lastly, on this article, it's customary to thank the department heads, who will be retiring in the upcoming year. George Hooper, the Superintendent of Public Buildings, who has been employed by the town since August of 1987. Not to be outdone, Tina Stewart, the Director of the Library, who has been employed by the town since July 15, 1974. Don't go anywhere, Ms. Stewart. I suspect your name's going to be mentioned at some point later today. We are on to Article 6, folks, and that begins on page 13. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the purchase of and equipping of new and/or replacement capital equipment, including but not limited to the following items, including any incidental or related expenses, and further to authorize the sale, trade-in, conveyance, or other disposition of any equipment being so replaced. Such funds to be spent by the town department, so indicated, the approval of the town manager, and to the extent set forth in Chapter 592 of the Acts of 1950, the Select Board. Folks, it is customary to take up these items line by line, so I will divide this question accordingly, and I will note that the Finance Committee recommends approval of all the items of capital equipment listed in Article 6. I will defer first to Select Board Member West on the issue of the Police Department purchase of four replacement police cruisers. Mr. West.
Good morning, Mr. Moderator. I move that the $250,000 be raised and appropriated from available funds, free cash of the town to be spent on the, by the town manager for the purchase and equipping of four replacement police vehicles for the police department, including all incidental and related expenses, and further the sale, trade-in, or other disposition, if any of said replaced vehicles is hereby authorized.
Thank you, Mr. West. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded in discussion.
Hi, I'm Barb Bowden, One Leonard Lane. I wanted to sort of step back and just talk about this section more generally so I understood. I had trouble finding the amounts here, so I was curious about why they weren't sort of listed in, in sort of the article as stated, and I'd like to understand sort of town planning around vehicle and equipment planning over time as sort of a general, like, is it done in each unit separately? Do we have a master plan like we do for facilities? How do we think about this? Because if information that I found separately is correct, we're talking in this article about $900,000 investment, and I'd love to understand in totality how we think about renewal in these spaces.
All right, so I'm going to interpret that as two separate questions, one as to construction of this and really more generally other articles that do not contain the specific dollar figure. That is custom practice. So in article, the purpose of an article is to put residents on notice that an action may be taken to effectuate the stated purpose of the article. It is common practice across the Commonwealth to not include, in most instances, an actual dollar figure, because a dollar figure oftentimes is not finalized at the time the warrant is finalized. So the motion is really the operative thing. We're not voting on articles, we're voting on motions on articles. So when Mr. West made a motion for $250,000 free cash to pay for those, those replacement police vehicles, that is the operative figure. Oftentimes, those figures are finalized by the time the public hearing comes up in mid, in the middle of March. By the time the warrant happens a few weeks earlier, or the, by the time the warrant is finalized a few weeks earlier, those numbers are still a bit of a work in progress.
So this information could be found where? On the website? How do we understand this?
So this information is, is usually discussed in detail at the public hearing that happens. It's joint with the Finance Committee and the Planning Board in the middle of March.
But not released publicly, like, online?
It is a posted meeting that's available. WCTV is always broadcasted for as, as far back as I can think.
Okay.
And, Mr. Hall, if you want to speak to the issue of any planning for the cycling of, of capital vehicles?
So, capital vehicles, along with all of our capital projects, whether it's it's repairs to buildings or roads, uh, we have a five-year capital plan, uh, and departments uh, in, uh, early, uh, in the fall of two thousand twenty-two in this case, are asked to review that, uh, capital plan, make modifications to it. We- it's part of the budget discussion that happens. So, uh, in the case of these vehicles, uh, it has been, uh, customary practice to replace, uh, certain, uh, police cruisers, uh, on an annual basis. Uh, these are just some of the, uh, vehicles in the, uh, police fleet, and that's done, uh, in part because, uh, the frontline vehicles are typically, uh, high-mileage vehicles as high demand place on them, uh, a lot of idle time in- in the case of, um, instances where they're, uh, located at different places around town doing, uh, traffic, uh, monitoring or- or speed monitoring, as well as obviously responding to emergencies. So, uh, the police cruiser, uh, line item has been a standard for many, many years, but more generally, uh, we do have a five-year plan to, uh, look forward and try to, uh, spread out the cost of our various capital investments.
So, just to follow up on that, um, you're saying that, um, vehicles are replaced every year in terms of each vehicle is replaced every year, or some of them are replaced regularly and we have a line item each year for some of the vehicles?
Uh, some vehicles are replaced, uh, each year, but not- not every single vehicle and every department is replaced each year. But clearly, the premise is that to avoid a situation where we have an emergency need to replace multiple vehicles in one year, we're trying to spread them out over time.
Great. Um, and I- I just want to sort of, um, vocalize that the questions that I'm having, um, are really around sort of, um, resource allocation and how we think about investment sort of across our budget, because I know that, you know, that I'm closer to conversations around school investment, and so I'm- I'm seeing sort of the scrutiny around some of the project base that are really required and needed right now based on the Wildwood being closed and- and how much scrutiny, um, and conversation there was around that project. Um, you know, this actually, all of these vehicles are around the same amount, and I'm just curious about making sure that I understand, um, that that scrutiny and that those conversations about how we allocate resources are happening in every space across, um, a town's budget. So, thank you.
Uh, just for future reference, the Capital Improvement Plan is, uh, available on the town meeting web- uh, webpage on the town's website. So, uh, certainly avail yourself of that if you're- you're curious about more on that topic. Further discussion for the purchase of four replacement police cruisers in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to come from free cash. See none will call for the vote. Uh, if you are in favor of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from free cash to purchase four replacement police cruisers, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Say aye.
Voted. Fire Department for the purchase of one replacement fire prevention vehicle, Ms. Misselli.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Excuse me. I move that sixty-seven thousand dollars be raised and appropriated from the FY twenty-four tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the perf- purchase- purchase and equipping of one fire prevention vehicle for the fire department, including all incidental and related expenses, and further the sale, trade-in, or other disposition if any of said replaced vehicles by hereby authorized.
Thank you, Ms. Misselli. That is the main motion. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Discussion. See none will call for the vote. If you are in favor of sixty-seven thousand dollars for the purchase of one replacement fire prevention vehicle, so indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Department of Public Works for the purchase of one heavy-duty third- three-quarter-ton pickup truck with plow to be assigned to the Cemetery Division. Mr. Ben- Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that sixty-five thousand dollars be raised and appropriated from the FY twenty-four tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purchase of- a purpose of purchasing and equipment, equipping a heavy-duty three-quarter-ton pickup truck with the plow for the DPW Cemetery Division, including in all incidental and related expenses, and further the sale, trade-in, or other disposition if any of said replaced vehicles be hereby authorized.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Discussion in the back. Mr. Toth.
John Toth, fifty-four, for Your Enza Drive, and Mr. Bendel may have touched on it, but, um, the Department of Public Works, and I've looked through the past, uh, seven years or so, has always purchased a, um, a pickup truck, uh, or every time, it seems like there's a heavy dump truck being purchased every year. And the other ones in there, the School Department, Fire Department, Police Department, all say replacement. Uh, they never say it's a replacement, and I don't know, are we developing a fleet of trucks or are- is there a replacement? And maybe Mr. Bendel has already touched on that.
Uh, this is the, uh, replacement of a two thousand ten Ford, uh, F-two-fifty.
So, in- in the, um, overall thing, these are replacement?
Yes. The- the typically, uh, this is again, replacing vehicles, um, you know, as they age out typically ten, fifteen years, uh, depending upon the circumstances. The- we have a mechanics division that looks at each of the vehicles, uh, whether it's a public works vehicle, a police cruiser, a fire vehicle, and makes an assessment as to, uh, whether a particular vehicle, uh, needs to be replaced. It could be any number of things. Uh, certainly, safety issues come to the fore, uh, but sometimes the cost of repair outweighs, uh, the- the, um, value of keeping it.
Okay, and I assume there may be some new ones being purchased that we didn't have before as well.
There may be instances where, uh, new equipment is purchased, yes, but the predominantly we're replacing equipment as it ages out.
Uh, I think it'd be nice to show that on- in the warrant so that we know, is it a replacement or is it something new? Thank you.
Further discussion on the heavy-duty three-quarter-ton pickup truck with plow to be assigned to the Cemetery Division. See none will call for the vote. If you are in favor of sixty-five thousand dollars to be spent for the purchase of a heavy-duty three-quarter-ton pickup truck with plow to be assigned to the Cemetery Division, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Still on, Department of Public Works for the purchase of one heavy-duty dump truck with plow and swappable dump body, flatbed, and sander to be assigned to the Highway Division. Mr. Kyra.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that three hundred thousand dollars be raised and appropriated from available funds, free cash to be spent by the town manager for the purchase and equipping of one heavy-duty dump truck with plow and swappable dump body, flatbed and sander for the Department of Public Works, Highway Division, including all incidental and related expenses, and further the sale, trade-in, or other disposition if any of said replaced vehicle by, uh, be hereby authorized.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Discussion. Just name and ad- oh, name and address for the record, please.
Um, I'm Barb Bowden from One Leonard- Leonard Lane. I'd be interested in- in similar information on this vehicle in terms of the age, if it's a replacement, um, and sort of what other vehicles serve this function in the town right now.
All right, so Mr. Mr. Hall, on the questions of whether this is a replacement vehicle and then if we have any others capable of doing the same.
Uh, this is a- this is a replacement vehicle. Uh, it replaces a two thousand six, uh, six-wheel dump truck. Uh, this vehicle, uh, is, uh, a bit different than the vehicle it's replacing in that it actually has some measure of adaptability. There's the ability to change out, uh, the dump body for a flatbed and a sander, so it's fill- it's a more versatile vehicle than just a conventional, uh, dump truck.
And follow-up question. Um, if this isn't, um, approved, then what would be the plan for the town?
Mr. Hall, what would be, I, yeah, what would the town's plan be if- if this purchase were not approved?
Uh, it's if the- if it's not approved, uh, we will continue to use the vehicle that we have to the extent that it can remain in service. I don't know, uh, offhand, uh, how long this- the current vehicle can remain in service.
See the, um, Mr. McGoldy wishes to speak as well, so.
Good morning. Jamie McGoldy, Public Works Director. I can appreciate the question. This particular vehicle is a Sterling dump truck. The parts are obsolete. We can no longer- no longer find replacement parts. Failure to purchase this vehicle would mean we would have to park it. Um, but before that, we would try to kind of keep it moving as far as we can. However, we would have to park it, most notably during a season of heavy ne- heavy use, like the snow season. This is one of our primary snow plow and sanders, and you would see an effect in the streets.
And just one follow-up if I may. Um, how many, um, vehicles are related to, um, plowing and snow that- in the fleet?
Uh, overall, we have approximately forty vehicles, um, plowing, and we have approximately six to seven salter vehicles.
Thank you.
Further discussion. See none will call for the vote on the purchase of a heavy-duty dump truck with a plow and swappable dump body, flatbed and sander to be assigned to the Highway Division in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars to come from free cash. If you are in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Still on, Department of Public Works for the purchase of one heavy-duty winged field mower to be assigned to the Parks and Grounds Division. Mr. DePalma. Microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars be raised and appropriated from FY twenty-four tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purpose, eh, purchase and equipment of one heavy-duty winged field mower for the Department of Public Works, Parks and Grounds Division, including all incidentals, related expenses, and further the sale, trade-in, or other disposition if any of said replacement vehicle be hereby authorized.
Thank you, Mr. DePalma. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion. Mr. Hall?
Uh, just for point of information, so this, uh, particular mower, uh, replaces a two thousand fourteen, uh, mower. This is a critical part of the fleet because we have approximately forty acres of athletic fields and parks that, uh, this vehicle use- is used for.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Further discussion. See none will call for the vote. If you are in favor of a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars for the purchase of one heavy-duty winged field mower to be assigned to the Parks and Grounds Division, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Lastly, for the School Department for the purchase of one replacement handicap-accessible wheelchair minivan, Mr. West.
Mr. Moderator, I move that seventy-six thousand dollars be raised and appropriated from the FY twenty-four tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purchase and equipping of one handicapped accessible wheelchair minivan for the School Department, including all incidental and related expenses, and further the sale, trade-in, or other disposition of any of said replaced vehicles be hereby authorized.
Thank you, Mr. West. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion. Mr. Hall?
Uh, again, just for, uh, information, uh, this will replace a two thousand fifteen, uh, minivan with approximately a hundred and thirteen thousand miles on it, transports, uh, School Department students.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Further discussion. See none will call for the vote. If you are in favor of, uh, seventy-six thousand dollars for the purchase of one replacement handicap-accessible wheelchair minivan, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. All right, ladies and gentlemen, buckle up. Article seven. Article seven was voted in the affirmative pursuant to the consent agenda, and the moderator will accept that vote of approval as the vote taken thereon. Article eight. Article eight was voted in the affirmative pursuant to the consent agenda, and the moderator will accept the vote of approval as the vote taken thereon. Article nine. Article nine was voted in the affirmative pursuant to the consent agenda, and the moderator will accept that vote of approval as the vote taken thereon. Article ten. Article ten was voted in the affirmative pursuant to the consent agenda, and the moderator will accept that vote of approval as the vote taken thereon. Article eleven. Article eleven was voted in the firm pursuant to the con- pursuant to the consent agenda, and the moderator will accept that vote of approval as the vote taken thereon. Article twelve. Article twelve was voted in the affirmative pursuant to the consent agenda, and the moderator will accept the vote of approval as the vote taken thereon. Article thirteen was voted in the affirmative pursuant to the consent agenda, and the moderator will accept that vote of approval as the vote taken thereon. Article fourteen for the sum of, uh, sum of money for the purchase of three cardiac monitors to be used by the Fire Department. Mr. Kyra. Mr. Kyra.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I, uh, I will not read as fast as you. I move that one hundred and eighty thousand dollars be raised and appropriated from FY twenty-four tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purchase of three cardiac monitors to be used by the Fire Department, including any incidentals or related costs and expenses.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Uh, Finance Committee recommends approval of Article fourteen. Discussion. See none will call for the vote. If you are in favor of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the- for the purchase of three cardiac monitors to be used by the Fire Department, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article fifteen, which is for a sum of money for the Information Technology Department to continue the replacement of a voice-over internet protocol VoIP phone systems at all municipal buildings and the Public Safety Building. Mr. DePalma.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that fifty thou- fifty-four thousand dollars be raised and appropriated from FY twenty-four tax levy and other general revenue of the town to be spent by the town manager for the Informational Technology Department to continue the replacement of the voice-over internet protocol VoIP phone system at all municipal buildings and the Public Safety Building, including any incidentals and related costs and expenses.
Thank you, Mr. DePalma. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Second, uh, motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article fifteen. Mr. Toth.
John Toth, fifty-four, for Your Enza Drive. Just a quick question. Uh, I think a couple of years ago, this was identified as a three-year program. Is this the end of this replacement?
Mr. Hall?
Yes, it is. This is the third year of a three-year cycle.
Thank you.
Further discussion on Article fifteen. See none? Call for the vote. If you are in favor of fifty-four thousand dollars, uh, for the, uh, purchase of, uh, the continued replacement of a voice-over internet protocol VoIP phone systems at all municipal buildings and the Public Safety Building on Article fifteen, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article sixteen, for a sum of money for the purchase of four mobile computers, antennas, and appropriate mounting to be installed in police vehicles slash cruisers. Mr. West.
Mr. Moderator, I move that fifty thousand dollars be raised and appropriated from the FY twenty-four tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purchase of four mobile computers, antennas, and appropriate mounting to be installed in police vehicles slash cruisers, including any incidental or related expenses, costed expenses.
Thank you, Mr. West. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion. See none will call for the vote. If you are in favor of fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of four mobile computers, antennas, and appropriate mounting to be installed in police vehicles slash cruisers, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article seventeen, which is for a sum of money for the purchase of one stainless steel salter for the Highway Division. Mr. Uh, Ms. Misselli.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I move that thirty-six thousand dollars be raised and appropriated from the FY twenty-four tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purchase of one stainless steel- steel salter for the Highway Division, including any incidental or related costs and expenses.
Thank you, Ms. Misselli. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Discussion. Mr. Toth.
John Toth, fifty-four, for Your Enza Drive. Just a quick question. I was wondering why this wasn't included under, uh, the capital stuff that we've mentioned before, since it's related to the Highway Division and the trucks and stuff.
Uh, Mr. Hall?
Uh, this was- this is a, uh, piece of equipment to be used on a truck, so it- it wasn't included as, uh, in- in the other category. So, typically, in Article Six, it's for the vehicles itself, where this is an attachment piece.
Further discussion on Article seventeen. See none will call for the vote. On Article seventeen, if you are in favor of thirty-six thousand dollars for the purchase of one stainless steel salter for the Highway Division, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted. Article eighteen, which is for a sum of money for the purchase of one laser greater attachment for the Highway Division. Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that twenty-five thousand dollars be raised and appropriated from the FY twenty-four tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for one laser-grade attachment for the Highway Division, including any incidental or related costs and expenses.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article eighteen. Discussion. See none will call for the vote on Article eighteen, which is for the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of one laser greater attachment for the Highway Division. If you are in favor of that amount, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Voted unanimously. Article XIX, which is for a sum of money for the purchase of one leaf box attachment to be assigned to the Parks and Grounds Division, Mr. Kyra.
Mr. Moderator, I move that $19,250 be raised and appropriated from the FY24 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purchase of one leaf box attachment to be assigned to the Parks and Grounds Division, including any incidental and related costs and expenses.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article XIX. CNN will call for the vote on Article XIX, which is for a sum of money for the purchase of one leaf box attachment to be assigned to the Parks and Grounds Division. If you are in favor of that, the amount of $19,250, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article XX, which is for a sum of money for the replacement of the existing playground at the Botwell School, including design and engineering costs, site preparation and construction costs. Mr. De Palma.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that $120,000 be raised and appropriated from FY24 tax levy and other general revenue of the town to be spent by the town manager for the replacement of the existing playground at the Botwell School, including design, engineering costs, site preparations, and construction costs, and any incidental and, excuse me, any incidental or related cost expenses.
Thank you, Mr. De Palma. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Finance Committee recommends approval of Article XX. Discussion. Name and address for the record, please.
Jennifer Benelli, 17 Jacob Street. I was just wondering if you could clarify the size of this structure in terms of the number of kids that it accommodates relative to the current structure and relative to the one that's being put in at the middle school for the Wildwood students.
Mr. Hall?
I would defer to the Public Works Director, Jamie McGoldy.
Thank you for the question. This particular article refers to the replacement of the playground at Botwell, which is designed to replace essentially the same climbing structure that's there now as far as size. That would be approximately 43 feet by 40 of a rectangle. That would be the area of protection around the climbing zone. The image that you see here is a concept plan that ideally would be the actual playground, and it would accommodate approximately the same number of students at the Botwell now. How does this size up to the playground at the middle school, which is designed to be a temporary playground? That playground is essentially about 28 feet wide by 34 feet long, which is a little bit smaller, but that is designed to accommodate approximately the same-sized students as the Botwell now.
And just one follow-up. Is that, how do I phrase this? Are we accommodating, like, all of the kindergartners? Can all of the kindergartners play? Or do we have to make some sacrifices on that? Was there a discussion of that when we came up with this plan?
Essentially, like I said, it's designed to accommodate the same number of students at the Botwell. Unfortunately, I don't have the number of kindergarten students that would be at a particular recess at a time, and I'm not sure if the recesses are staggered, but if they are, it would essentially be the same as it is now.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion on Article 20. Ms. Nguyen, is it?
Barb Bowden, 1 Leonard Lane.
Okay.
Just to follow up on that. So programmatically, when we have one recess, not all the kids are able to participate on the playground. They have to split it up, right? Because that playground isn't sized for the number of students that are at any recess. Is that? I'm not sure where I would direct that question.
Is your question whether the proposed replacement playground would be sufficient for the present number of students that are using recess at any time?
No, I'm not comparing to what we have now. What my question is, is do we have to make programmatic changes, as we have in the past, so that not all kids at one recess can use this playground because it's not large enough to accommodate the number of students at any given recess?
Okay, so I'm going to have to defer to the School Department on any programmatic changes that would need to take place or anticipated to take place with the possibility of a replacement playground at the Botwell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Glenn Brand, Superintendent of Schools. No, I don't, right now, recess is staggered. Not all the same students, my understanding, are out at the same time, so from an accommodating standpoint, that structure should suffice and still provide equal access for students.
Further discussion on Article 20.
Mr. Moderator, I would just note that this, again, was in our capital plan. This was slated to be replaced. Replaces a 2001 structure that was, has been there, but some of the parts have been, had to be removed due to safety concerns and can no longer be replaced. So this was on the docket well before the issues with the Wildwood School.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Further discussion on Article 20. CNN will call for the vote. If you are in favor of $120,000 for the replacement of the existing playground at the Botwell School, including design and engineering costs, site preparation and construction costs. Again, this is Article 20. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article 21, which is for a sum of money for engineering services to replace the high school turf field carpet. Mr. West.
Mr. Moderator, I move that $40,000 be raised and appropriated from the FY24 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for engineering services to replace the high school turf field carpet, including any incidental or related cost or expenses, and expenses.
Thank you, Mr. West. I'll accept that as the main motion on Article 21. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 21. Discussion. Ms. Sullivan.
Suzanne Sullivan, 60 Lorren Street. In regards to this article, I really think that the town needs to consider moving away from turf fields. They're not good for our kids. Chewed-up tires is a hazardous material. Even the city of Boston has banned any new turf fields in their city due to health concerns. It just doesn't seem logical to chew our hazardous waste, reuse it, and have our children playing on it. I will be in opposition to this article. I will be in opposition in the future if it comes up to spend any more money on turf fields in the town. We really need to move away from this. There's plenty of information out there. This town needs to educate itself on the hazards of turf fields. Thank you.
Further discussion on Article 21. Mr. Toth.
John Toth, 54, Fiorenza Drive. This says engineering services only, and it says the high school turf field carpet, but it didn't really say it was engineering services to put in a new turf field, or maybe can replace with grass. I don't read it here to see exactly what the services are providing.
Mr. Hall, and the intent of this article?
So the intent is to provide engineering services associated with a new turf field. It would be developing the specifications so that in the subsequent year, a bid could be issued for replacement of the turf field. Actually, it may not be in the next fiscal year, just because of the timing of the work. It may be in fiscal '26, but the plan would be for the article before you to obtain engineering services to develop the particular specifications required to replace the existing turf field.
When was this field put in?
This was installed in October of 2013.
Is this a typical length of time to go before replacement?
The turf fields are recommended for replacement between 10 to 12 years from the time they're initially installed.
Thank you.
All right. Further discussion on Article 21. Mr. McGoldy?
Hi, Mike McGoldy, 5 Crystal Road. Speak upon myself. Just a question on the engineering service. Could this service also take into consideration replacing with grass instead of the turf field? I do share the same concerns as the previous commenter.
Mr. Hall?
I would defer to the Public Works Superintendent.
Jamie McGoldy, Public Works Director. The intent of this article was to provide engineering services to replace the carpet, which, when this was installed in 2013, there was a known that we would have to consider replacing this carpet at some point in the future. Similarly, we did this with Yentile Field recently. The technology at Yentile is a little bit different in that there is a brock pad underneath that field, which will hopefully make it last a little bit longer. For anyone who has played on both of these fields, you can notice that the quality of turf at Yentile is a little bit better. But to answer your question, the services that were intended for this were strictly to replace the wearing carpet. There is a potential that we can look at the material as far as either reusing the existing chrome rubber or getting rid of that and using an alternative substance for the fill. That has been done recently at some other turf projects. For instance, the town of Billreka just recently did a turf field over at one of their recreation fields, and they did not use chrome rubber, but it was synthetic, so it was almost a mix there. So we will be looking at options there, but the primary intent of this article would be to replace the turf.
I see further discussion on Article 21.
Barb Bowden, 1 Leonard Lane. Just a follow-up question on that. Is there opportunity to expand the scope of the engineering services to look at replacement, like, options between replacing turf and replacing grass and building that into the scope so that we have more information in terms of the next decision that's coming down in a financial, significant financial investment in replacing the turf?
I'm interpreting your question as one of a point of order to see whether or not a motion to amend would be appropriate, and if, yes, that would certainly be within the scope of Article 21. So if you're seeking to amend it to explore the possibility of using some alternative to field turf, then yes, that would be within the scope.
I'd like to make a motion. Is that what I say?
I will need to see that in writing, and it could simply just be to add the words and however you want to phrase it. Robertson. I think you just signed it, too, please. You just signed it, too. Sorry. Stick around, Mike. I might need you. The music is delicious right now. Including the assessment of, what is, I hope, that would be outside the scope. All right, so the motion to amend, to expand the scope of the engineering services to expand, to include the exploration of options between replacing a field with turf or grass. So there's a motion on the floor to amend the motion on Article 21, to expand the scope of the engineering services, to include the exploration of options between replacing the field with turf or with grass. Is there a second on the motion to amend?
Yes.
The motion has been made and seconded. Just discussing the amendment as to whether or not we're expanding the scope of the engineering services. Ms. Sullivan.
I obviously will move to amend. I really urge everybody in the town to really take a look at this. You know, it's our kids' health.
Can I interject, Ms. Sullivan? You said you're moving to amend. Are you moving to further amend, or are you raising support?
No, 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 no. I'm just speaking on the amendment and approval of the amendment, and I, there's other alternatives to this, other besides synthetic. There's also coconut chips. There's a whole lot of other things that the town could investigate when doing this, and I hope that they will beyond even the turf, but if it's going to be grass, if it's going to be synthetic. But it just doesn't make sense, in my opinion, to have children running around on hazardous waste. It's good to reuse tires, just I don't think it should be reused to have our children playing on it. It's not good, and I hope that everybody stands up in favor of this amendment. It doesn't hurt to take a look anyways. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to amend. Mr. Hall?
I would just suggest that, you know, the implication that the town has created a environment, a hazardous waste environment for kids to play on is simply not true. You know, the suggestion that we have two turf fields that are hazardous for kids to play on, and we have knowingly done that, you know, I take strong exception to.
Further discussion on the motion to amend. CNN will call for a vote. If you are in favor of amending the motion on Article 21 to expand the scope of the engineering services to include the exploration of options between replacing the field with turf or with grass, we'll do this by a voice vote if we can. So if you are in favor of that motion to amend, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
You're opposed, say no.
No.
The measure passes. So we're back on discussion on the amended main motion. Let me just bring up everything we got here, folks. Please, just give me a second. Is there further discussion before I restate the now amended motion? CNN, so I'm going to ask for a vote. If you are in favor of $40,000 to be raised and appropriated from the fiscal '24 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for engineering services to include the exploration of options between replacing the field with turf or with grass at the high school, the high school field, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, say no. I want Article 22, which is for a sum of money to resurface the existing tennis courts at the Botwell School, including design and engineering costs, site preparation and construction costs. Ms. Misselli.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I move that $40,000 be raised and appropriated from the FY24 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager to resurface the existing tennis courts at the Botwell School, including design and engineering costs, site preparation and construction costs, and any incidental or related costs and expenses.
Thank you, Ms. Misselli. A motion is made, and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 22. Discussion. CNN will call for the vote. If you are in favor of $40,000 to resurface the existing tennis courts at the Botwell School, including design and engineering costs, site preparation and construction costs, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article 23, which is for a sum of money to replace the 320 feet, more or less, of the existing four-foot-high chain-link fence between 175 and 171 Middlesex Avenue at the Wilmington Memorial Library's southwest property line. Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that $20,000 be raised and appropriated from the FY24 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager to replace 320 feet, more or less, of existing four-foot-high chain-link fence of existing four-foot-high chain-link fence between 175 and 171 Middlesex Avenue at the Wilmington Memorial Library's southwest property line, including any incidental or related costs and expenses.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made, and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 23. Discussion. Mr. Meloagni.
Paul Meloagni, 176 Middlesex Ave. I had inquired either last year or the year before about the replacement of this fence, and I was told that it was owned by the resident next door to the library, the old cane house. Is that, who owns the fence, actually?
Mr. Hall or Mr. McGoldy?
The town owns the fence.
Okay. Further discussion on Article 23. See none, we'll call for the vote. If you are in favor of $20,000 to replace the 320 feet, more or less, of the existing four-foot-high chain-link fence between 175 and 171 Middlesex Avenue at the Wilmington Memorial Library's southwest property line, again, this is Article 23. If you are in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article 24, which is for a sum of money for the continued phased cemetery development. Mr. Kyra.
Mr. Moderator, I move that $80,000 be raised and appropriated from FY '24 tax levy or other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the phased cemetery development, including any incidentals or related costs and expenses.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made, and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 24. Discussion. Ms. Sullivan.
Suzanne Sullivan, 60 Long Street. I just had a quick question. Are there any trees included in this budget and for the cemetery? Because there's been a lot of dieback of trees. I mean, the trees look like they need some help, and it'd be really nice if we could plant more trees in the cemetery. And I know Jamie's awesome about trees, so I'm just wondering if there's any trees in the budget here.
Mr. McGoldy.
Thanks, Ms. Sullivan. The budget is general so that we can use it for trees, some trees if we need to. Primarily, it's focused on the new Section Q where the existing 64 Wildwood Street once resided. But as you know, with that plan, we do have trees included. The problem with planting trees in the existing cemetery is very little space left to do that that are already occupied by graves. But generally speaking, when we do get funds, we can channel them down to the cemetery as we have been to do replacements.
Further discussion on Article 24. See none, I'm going to call for the vote. If you are in favor of $80,000 for the continued phased cemetery development on Article 24, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article 25, which is to raise and appropriate or transfer from department receipts or user fees a sum of money to operate the Department of Public Works Sewer Division Enterprise, Mr. DePomo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that $3,672,484 be appropriated from the department's receipts to be spent by the town manager for the purpose of operating the Department of Public Works Sewer Division Enterprise.
Thank you, Mr. DePomo. I will accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made, and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 25. Discussion.
Alan Swinski, 8 Fearonza Drive. Exactly what is the Public Works Sewer Division Enterprise? Is that scheme where the receipts from sewer charges go to finance? I'm not quite sure what it is.
A few years ago, the town meeting authorized the establishment of an enterprise account. So the revenue that is generated for, from those companies and households that are tied to sewer, that revenue comes back into this account as opposed to going into the town's general fund, and then funds are drawn from that account to pay for the operations.
Further discussion on Article 25. See none, I'm going to call for the vote. If you are in favor of $3,672,484 for the operation of the Department of Public Works Sewer Division Enterprise on Article 25, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article 26, which is for a sum of money for a replacement pump at the Pilcher Drive Pump Station, including design and engineering costs, Mr. West.
Mr. Moderator, I move that $30,000 be raised and appropriated from Sewer Enterprise Fund to be spent by the town manager for a replacement pump at Pilcher Drive Pump Station, including design and engineering costs, any incidental or related costs and expenses.
Thank you, Mr. West. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 26. Discussion. See none, we'll call for the vote. If you are in favor of $30,000 for a replacement pump at the Pilcher Drive Pump Station, including design and engineering costs, again, this is Article 26, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article 27, which is for a sum of money for the replacement of approximately 19,124 square feet of roofing at the West Intermediate School, including design and engineering costs, site preparation and construction costs, Ms. Misselli.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I move that $550,000 be raised and appropriated from the Capital Stabilization Fund of the town to be spent by the town manager for the replacement of approximately 19,124 square feet of roofing at the West Intermediate School, including design and engineering costs, site preparation and construction costs, and any incidental or related costs and expenses.
Thank you, Ms. Misselli. I will accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made, and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 27. Discussion. Ms. Sullivan.
Suzanne Sullivan, 60 Long Street. My only question comment is, can the roof not be black and maybe white? Thank you.
Mr. Hall or Mr. McGoldy?
I would defer to the Public Building Superintendent.
Yeah, we could take a look at that, but I will say that originally, the white roofs typically, southern states in this country, we use the black ones here, and one of the main reasons, because of the snow loads, the sun does help us with the black, it does diminish that, and so we can take a look at it, you know, but it can be included in this cost.
Further discussion on Article 27. See none, we're going to call for the vote. If you are in favor of $550,000 to come from capital stabilization on Article 27 for the replacement of approximately 19,124 square feet of roofing at the West Intermediate Schools, school, including design and engineering costs, site preparation and construction costs, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article 28, which is for a sum of money for the design phase to replace windows and exterior doors at the West Intermediate School, Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that $170,000 be raised and appropriated from the FY '24 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the design phase to replace windows and exterior doors at the West Intermediate School, including any incidental or related costs and expenses.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 28. Discussion.
Kevin McDonald, 140 Indova Street. I realize that this is relative to public buildings, and I'd like to just ask one of the gentlemen on the Finance Committee a question, if that's okay, Mr. Moderator?
You can ask a question to me. I will frame it to whoever person I feel is best suited to answer your question.
Okay. I believe it was last year that I think a sum of like $800,000 was appropriated to replace boilers at the Woburn Street School, and I was watching a Finance Committee meeting. Mr. Hooper addressed them, and he stated that they should be able to keep the boilers going, and they wouldn't...
Mr. McDonald, I want to be clear that we're constraining our comments to the scope of Article 28, which is for the design phase to replace windows and exterior doors at the West Intermediate School.
Thank you for reiterating that. I already didn't know that. And the purpose for my comments and my purpose for rising today is because I thought it would be fair to let the folks here know that there was a large amount of money appropriated for boilers at the Woburn Street, and I'm just feeling as though, since that money's not being spent, and if we're looking to raise money, or, this is a simple question to the Finance Committee, yes or no question, is it correct that a large sum of money was appropriated for boilers at the Woburn Street School?
Mr. McDonald, we're not going to entertain motions or questions on articles that were the subject of previous meetings.
It's my motivation to try to use that money instead of taxing people again when that money wasn't spent.
Mr. McDonald, the votes authorize the expenditure of monies. They don't obligate the town to spend any money. So the town will be authorized under Article 26, 28, rather, to spend under the motion that has been presented, $170,000 for the replacement, oh, I'm sorry, for the design phase to replace windows and exterior doors at the West Intermediate School, and that is the extent to which they, that would authorize the town to do.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that, Mr. Moderator. I don't have a problem with that. I just rise to amend the article to say that this money be taken from free cash, since I believe the money from the Woburn Street School boilers was put into free cash. So I'd like to just amend that, so that the money for this here comes from free cash.
Mr. McDonald, I'm interpreting your comment as a motion to amend the funding source from the fiscal '24 tax revenues or tax levy to free cash. Is that...
That's correct.
Okay, is there a second? All right, your motion fails for lack of a second. We're back on discussion on Article 28. See no further discussion on Article 28. If you are in favor of $170,000 to come from the tax levy for the design phase to replace windows and exterior doors at the West Intermediate School, again, this is Article 28, and the Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 28, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article 29, which is for a sum of money for the design phase and replacement or restoration of historical windows at the Hardin Tavern Museum, Mr. Kyra.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that $115,000 be raised and appropriated from the FY '24 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the design phase and replacement or restoration of historical windows at the Hardin Tavern Museum, including any incidental or related costs and expenses.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 29. Discussion. See none, we'll call for the vote. If you are in favor of $115,000 for the design phase and replacement or restoration of historical windows at the Hardin Tavern Museum, again, this is Article 29. If you are in favor of that sum of money, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Voted. Article 30, which is for a sum of money for the design and replacement of roofing at the Hardin Tavern Museum Carriage House, including construction costs, Mr. DePomo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that $60,000 be raised and appropriated from the FY '24 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the design and replacement of the roof, roofing at the Hardin Tavern Museum Carriage House, including construction costs and any incidental or related costs and expenses.
Thank you, Mr. DePomo. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made, and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 30. Discussion.
Barb Bowden, 1 Leonard Lane. My question is about sort of the relativity of the cost of this roof versus the west and sort of why it is quite so much.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Hooper on the cost of, of the replacement of the roofing at the Hardin Tavern Museum Carriage House.
Compared to the west, do you say?
Yeah.
All right, so the west intermediate roof is 19,000 square feet of EPDM rubber roofing with insulation underneath. This year is 2,800 square feet of three-tab asphalt shingles, so they will strip that roof off, make sure the boards underneath are in good condition, and then put it under layment. So it's apples and oranges?
Well, I'm just more thinking about like a residential house, which it's more comparable to, and 60,000 wouldn't be sort of how much it would take for me to sort of do that. Is it that there's, we're anticipating a lot underneath in terms of board replacement?
No, when you do your house, you go out and you solicit bids. When we do a public project like this, we have to use a prevailing wage, which is slightly different.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion on Article 30 in the back.
Yes, with regard to bidding, I was looking at the town website, and one of the things that I noticed was, I'll use, for example, the Wilmington Housing Authority is putting out bids for Deming Way, and I noticed that they're no longer accepting sealed bids, that all the bids are electronic, and so...
So that, Mr. McDonald, the process through which bids are released is outside of the scope of Article 30, which deals only with the replacement of roofing at the Hardin Tavern Museum Carriage House.
Will the replacement of the roofing be bid out?
I believe...
Yes, it will.
So is that outside the scope of the article, if it's going to be bid out?
It is outside of the scope to dictate the method through which bidding is occurring on that.
Okay, I just had a little problem with that because there's been electronic fraud, but be that as it may. This is another article that's a public building, and since there's been a lot of money that was taxed to people and put into free cash, and since we're asking people to be taxed for replacing this, I'd like this sum of money to be raised, not through taxation, but through the over-budgeted amounts for past public buildings.
Mr. McDonald, we've been through this dance before. I'm not going to tolerate any incendiary remarks such as over-budgeting. If you're disagreeing with something, that's fine, and you're welcome to come and be heard and voice your opinion on this, but...
Can I ask a question then?
Go ahead, Mr. McDonald.
Has any money that's been generated into free cash from last year's budget been due to over-budgeted amounts?
Okay, Mr. McDonald, your comments need to be constrained to the scope of the article then under discussion. We're talking about the possibility of a replacement of the roof at the Hardin Tavern Carriage House.
That's correct, I understand that.
Your question and your commentary is outside of the scope.
I could see the picture right there, that's the Hardin Tavern Carriage House right behind you. So I know that we're on that article, so you don't need to tell me that, because I could read it.
Mr. McDonald, I'm asking that you constrain your commentary to the scope of the article projected behind.
And that's exactly what I want to do, because we're looking to raise money through taxing all these people and the people who couldn't make it here because they're out working, and so I'm just simply asking for an amendment, a second to the motion, so it can go forward, maybe some other people would like to discuss it, but I'd like to put forth an amendment that the money be raised, not through taxation, but through free cash, which was obtained through over-budget.
Mr. McDonald, I'm going to interpret your comments as a motion to amend the funding source on Article 30, to be, to strike the reference to the fiscal '24 tax levy and replace it with free cash. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. McDonald, I'm going to need to see that motion to amend in writing. Discussion is relative to the funding source that will be used. The motion to amend would replace the funding source in the main motion, which is the fiscal '24 tax levy with free cash. Ms. Tove.
This is not on the amendment?
This is only, this is discussion on the amendment.
Well, then, I have it on the original...
I'll catch you later.
Okay.
Further discussion on the motion to amend.
Yes, I think it would be fair, Mr. Moderator, to have the Finance Committee address the body here today, just to let people know how much was put into free cash from last year's budget.
I'll ask members of the Finance Committee if you care to chime in as to your recommendation to the town on the motion to amend now before the floor. So would you recommend, and again, you're not having time to meet collectively as a group, but if you cared to express your opinion on whether or not the funding source on Article 30 should be amended. Ms. Galezzo.
No.
of the motion to amend, it was relative, specific to your motion to amend the funding source.
That's correct.
So, on the merits of that motion, I'm asking the Finance Committee if they care to, to make a recommendation, which is their charge to the Assembly.
Mr. Moderator, point of order. I believe my question was not to ask them if they support it, but asked them what the amount of free cash was that was generated into free cash from the last year's budget...
That's well outside of the scope of your motion to amend, Mr. McDonald. Your motion to amend merely changes the funding source for sixty thousand dollars. We're not talking about the entire budget, we're not talking about the entire free cash amount, we're talking about whether or not to change the funding source. And three members of the Finance Committee have made a recommendation to the Assembly, which is the purpose of the Finance Committee. We're gonna go to further discussion in the back. Ms. Toth, again.
Is this on his amendment, or is this on...
This is, we're still on the amendment, we're gonna vote on the amendment, um, and then, uh, once that, that vote is, uh, made, we'll go back to discussion under the main motion, whether amended or not.
Hi, Barb Bowden, one Leonard Lane. Um, I'm, I'm curious about, um, the conversation, but in order to vote on this amendment, I don't feel prepared in terms of understanding the implications for, you know, if we take it from this pot versus the, the other. Um, so I'd love to hear sort of, I would love to hear from the Finance Committee about sort of, um, what, what the plans are for free cash and how something like this would impact, um, those plans that we already have for this year.
Uh, well, Finance Committee, you want, Mr. Hall, if you care to, uh, address the general plan, uh, or, um, perhaps the rationale behind, uh, the motion to take this originally with, uh, from the tax levy?
Typically, projects, uh, that are of a, uh, smaller, uh, budget are, uh, taken from the tax levy. Uh, free cash, the purpose of free cash i- in part is to fund, uh, larger projects, uh, whether they're large building projects, uh, any number of projects that, uh, cost several hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we also, uh, look to have a free cash balance in order to, uh, serve as a safety net, because there have been years, believe it or not, when, uh, the town's revenue stream has been stressed with the, with the economy, uh, in decline. And so, there have been years historically where the town has had to resort to the use of free cash, uh, to keep services, uh, going, to avoid, uh, service cuts. And so, those are a couple of reasons why we wanna have, uh, free cash available.
Further discussion on the motion to amend.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. McDonald, you're permitted to speak once on discussion on the motion to amend. You've already spoke on, under discussion on your motion to amend, and our inhabitant bylaws require...
Can I ask a question?
Further discussion on the motion to amend.
Alan Swinski, eight Fearrence Drive. When it says available funds, does that mean it's gotta be from fiscal twenty-four? Uh, is there a possibility it could come from free cash?
Mr. Hall, and the definition of available funds?
Uh, available funds include free cash. Uh, to your question, i- is it, I, as I understand, your question was, could it come from free cash, or could it come from the fiscal twenty-four tax levy? It, uh, it could come from either.
So, there's a possibility of free cash?
Sir, can you just approach the microphone? I, I wanna make sure conversation's not going...
Okay, so, it would be a judgment call where to take it from, is that correct? Are you, free cash or available funds?
The, the motion to amend that's presently under discussion would be to take it from free cash.
Right, but the part, where, the way it's written, it could be fiscal twenty-four receipts or free cash, right?
No, the, the motion that was...
Not the motion as written?
The, the main motion, which is under discussion to be amended, uh, was to take it from the, the fiscal twenty-four tax levy. And the motion to amend would be to change it from the tax levy to free cash.
Well, I thought the town manager just said available funds could, possibility of either, as, available funds is kinda gen- general.
It's for, from the fiscal twenty-four tax levy and other general revenues of the town.
So, I, I think there's some confusion here. As I understood it, sir, your question was, could this project be funded from, uh, the tax levy or from free cash? And my response to that is, that is a judgment call, and that either could happen. As I understand it, the motion on the floor is to take the funds from free cash. And, and that is, if, if the board, if the body, uh, decides to go that route, and that, to adopt that amendment, then there would be a main motion to consider.
So, if I could address kind of the procedural, uh, mechanism, and, and this actually ties on an earlier question as to whether or not dollar figures would, should be included within the actual text of an article. You'll see that many of the, the, uh, the, the language within articles will begin with, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, comma, transfer from available funds, or borrow pursuant to applicable statute, and then it goes on to a sum of money. The article itself lends out a couple options that the town, the town meeting could choose from, uh, that would be identified in the main motion, uh, for how something is going to be paid. So, the main motion was through the tax levy, which is within one of those options presided, or that, that is included within the text of the article. Uh, the maker of the motion to amend is seeking to change that from one to the other. Not seeing any further discussion on the motion to amend from someone who has not yet spoken on the motion to amend, uh, so I will call for a vote. Again, this is a vote on the motion to amend to change the funding source on the main motion from, uh, the tax, uh, fiscal twenty-four tax levy and other general revenues of the town to free cash funds. If you are in favor of the motion to amend, again, this is not on Article, this is not on the main motion on Article thirty, this is just on whether to change the funding source. If you're in favor of that cha-, uh, motion to amend, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, say no.
No.
The noes are gonna have it, so the motion fails. We're back on main, uh, on discussion on the main motion on Article thirty, which is sixty thousand dollars to come from the tax levy for the design and replacement of roofing at the Hardin Tavern Museum Carriage House. Ms. Toth, you've been very patient with us.
Linda Toth, fifty-four Fearrence Drive. Question I have on the design, are you looking for, and I, this might be, I might be out of order, but are they looking for a specific shingle that would have been put on at that time? Are we going to just get plain shingling on that, on the roof here and on the Hardin, um, so that it, it can cut down the cost, or are they going to be designer shingles that would cost sixty thousand dollars per roof?
So, they're not designer shingles? Uh, we'll be going through and looking at it, we're gonna have a, an engineer...
Okay.
That's going to put together a scope of work for this. Uh, it's going to, uh, design the entire job as far as if we have to do rakeboards or any soffit replacement also as we go through. But, uh, most likely, it's going to be an asphalt shingle. We'll look at that design when it comes up.
Okay.
And it'll either be three-tab or architectural, but most likely, it'll be a forty-year shingle. Uh, it's not gonna be similar to what's on the, uh, tab main house. This one here, uh, it has, like you said, the three-tab, um, asphalt shingles currently.
So, the design is for everything, is to make sure that all the studs or whatever needs to be replaced, that could be rotted, that is included in the sixty thousand dollars?
It's an in-depth design we'll go through to make sure everything's completed in the building.
So, that before, so I don't come up and ask about the next one, that could pertain to the next article as well?
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you.
Further discussion, Mr. McDonald.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, through you for a, a question for Mr. Hooper. Is it correct that this place is registered as a certified historical, um, landmark?
Mr. Hooper, is, to any, any, uh, consideration given, any historical status?
As far as this particular building, uh, I defer to anybody from the Historical Commission on this.
Bonnie Smith, thirty Marion Street, and I'm the Chair of the Historical Commission, and the, uh, the house is in fact on the National Register.
And just to be clear, that, that does not include, does that include the carriage house or not?
I'm really not sure, and I apologize that I don't know that, but I know the house is on Historical Register.
Right, I didn't believe so, so I just want a clarification.
The, the reason for my question is, back in like the seventeen hundreds, they didn't have asphalt shingles, and they had things that were conducive to historical, um, architecture at the time. So, maybe, um, the gentle lady here could answer the question, um, if they've reached out to, um, historical funding societies or anything like that to seek funds from them rather than the, uh, the taxpayers?
Uh, I'm gonna defer actually to Mr. Hall to see whether or not, uh, such funds are deemed to be accessible, uh, to the town, uh, for that, or, uh, would be likely to be granted.
Uh, there are funds available through Mass Historical, I'm not aware that they're, um, available for, um, replacing of roofs, but, um, there has not been a, uh, a request from two Mass Historical for this type of work.
So, just to clarify that, Mr. Moderator, so Mr. Hall has not reached out to them and requested them to see if there's funds available?
Mr. McDonald, you got your answer. The answer was...
I, I misunderstood it, I just wanted clarification.
I think the answer to his question, your question was yes.
He did reach out and there's no funds?
No.
'Cause that's not what I heard.
What he just said was, Mr. Hall just said was that, uh, he, he has not, uh, attempted to secure outside funding for this project.
Okay, and just the last question, um, uh, is there a private vehicle somebody's storing, their private, um, items in that building?
Mr. McDonald, that's outside of the scope, we're talking about the roof, not what's inside the house.
Okay.
Further discussion on Article thirty-one. Seeing none, we'll call, we'll call for the vote. If you are in favor of ninety-eight thousand dollars for the design engineering and replacement of roofing at the...
No.
I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. All right. If we are, and if you are in favor of sixty thousand dollars for the design and replacement of roofing at the Hardin Tavern Museum Carriage House, including construction costs on Article thirty, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Now, we are on to Article thirty-one. Which is for a sum of money for the design engineering and replacement of roofing at the Hardin Tavern, including construction costs. Mr. West.
Mr. Moderator, I move that ninety-eight thousand dollars be raised and appropriated from the FY twenty-four tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the design, engineering, and replacement of roofing at the Hardin Tavern, including construction costs and any incidental or related costs and expenses.
Thank you, Mr. West. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article thirty-one. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. If you are in favor of ninety-eight thousand dollars for the design engineering and replacement of roofing at the Hardin Tavern, including construction costs, again, this is Article thirty-one, ninety-eight thousand dollars, if you are in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article thirty-two, which is for a sum of money to renovate sections of the Wilmington Middle School to accommodate the relocation of Wildwood Early Childhood Center staff and students, and for relocation costs and furnishings and equipment, including design and engineering costs, site preparation, and construction costs. Mr. Ragsdale.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that five hundred forty-five thousand, three hundred fifty-nine dollars be raised and appropriated from available funds, free cash, to be spent by the town manager to renovate sections of the Wilmington Middle School, to accommodate the relocation of Wildwood Early Childhood Center staff and students, and for relocation costs and furnishings and equipment, including design and engineering costs, site preparation and construction costs, and any incidental or related costs and expenses, including any incidental or related costs and expenses.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. I'll accept that as the main motion, is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article thirty-two. Further discussion. I don't look any better in the bright lights, so, why don't we, why don't we either get our sunglasses out or, uh...
Me?
If I can see you, then yes.
Okay.
Miss Benelli in the back.
Jennifer Benelli, seventeen Jacob Street. Um, you said the number was five hundred and forty-five thousand?
Five hundred forty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Okay, um, so the original number recommended by the committee and the professional that was hired to, um, assess the situation was one point one million, and I pre, understand that a portion of that, I think the hundred and twenty thousand has been taken out of elsewhere, which would be about a million dollars if we were working off the budget that the pers- that the professional, the town hired, recommended. Um, so can you please explain the difference between nine hundred, or a hundred thou- or a million dollars and five hundred and forty-five thousand? Are we getting the exact same thing for fifty percent off? Are we cutting things out? What's going on here?
Yes, I'm gonna defer first to Mr. Hall and possibly to Dr. Brand after that, uh, for an explanation of, uh, the figure.
Uh, there is a, a change in the scope of work, so the, uh, project that was, uh, proposed at one point one million, uh, as was noted, there was a hundred thousand in there for a playground, which is now being, uh, taken care of through another funding source, source. Uh, also, there was, uh, a, a much, uh, more significant, uh, proposal for change out of rooms. In this case, uh, the five hundred and forty-five thousand and change, uh, contemplates the, a change of a, an office, uh, space located off of the library, uh, to restrooms for, uh, ma- male, female restrooms for the pre-K and K students, and all the associated, uh, plumbing, uh, with regard to that. So, it's a, a smaller scope. Uh, there were discussions that, uh, took place, uh, between the, uh, Chair of the Select Board, the Chair of the School Committee, the Superintendent, and myself, and there was agreement that, um, that this scope of work would, would work. Uh, we've worked with our, uh, the fir- the same firm that was recommending the larger scope, Doran Whittier, and they've designed, uh, this, uh, project for this amount of money.
Um, is this current scope the one that was presented at the Wildwood Building School Committee mea- or, Wildwood School Building Committee meeting in, um, March? Is that the plan, or has it planned changed since that March presentation to the public?
The March, uh, Finance Committee meeting, I, I'm...
No, the Wildwood, at the Wildwood Buildings, de- (laugh) at the Wildwood Building Mea- Committee meeting, they presented what the scope would look like to the public, that the design of Doran Whittier, and the public was able to see what that would be and understand, um, how that related to the original budget created in December. Is the budget, is the five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars going to give us that plan that was given to us in March, or have, does, have we cut things out since that meeting?
Uh, I would, uh, ask perhaps the Superintendent to, um, comment, and I, I don't recall specifically whether the last Wildwood School Building Committee, uh, whether the scope that we are talking about here was, uh, discussed at that meeting.
Mr. Moderator?
Please.
Glenn Brand, Superintendent of Schools. So, uh, I'm myself trying to think back to that last meeting, we've had an awful lot of meetings around this project lately, for sure, but I, so I don't recall, I don't recall exactly if this plan was showcased at that meeting. However, what I will say is that, uh, the plan has not changed on its face in the sense of, uh, still providing construction, which in a forthcoming report I'll speak to, still providing construction for, uh, bathrooms to serve the younger population. Uh, the change is in a different location of the wing of the middle school building, uh, but still, on its face, the same, uh, overarching plan, and all other aspects related to that plan remain the same.
Can we show the plan that we're voting on and how that differs from the one million dollar or nine hundred thousand, depending how you do the math, version?
Mr. Hall?
Uh, I was just gonna note that certainly this was discussed at the Finance Committee Public Hearing, which was held back in, in March, and so, any, any, there was an opportunity at that time to, uh, hear about the plan, but in terms of the actual design plans, we, I don't have them here.
All right, aren't they on the website in the public, 'cause they were presented at a public meeting? I mean, we're talking about half the cost... I mean, we're talking about half the cost, so I think we just need a little bit more detail on why it's half the cost that the original plan was. Two hundred thousand is, we took it out somewhere else, what about the other?
I'm going to defer to Ms. Calazo on the Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, can I have Dr. Brand discuss this, if this is satisfactory to the school, the current plan with this budget?
Dr. Brand?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. So, Ms. Calazo, could you, sorry, repeat your question one more time, please?
I think the question is whether or not the motion as presented for the five hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars...
Thank you.
...is acceptable to the school department.
It is. We have worked in partnership with the town manager and Doran Whittier, the consultant firm who has been with us every step of the way. This shift, I think it's important to point out, Mr. Hall may speak to this a little bit more, the shift in the number in a downward sense, in a better sense, still provides all elements of this plan that has been presented publicly, whether it be to the Finance Committee, whether it be the School Committee, whether it be within the Wildwood Building Committee. So, I absolutely can say that we're very comfortable with these numbers. They're, they came in lower than what was anticipated and what was being carried for the project. That's a great thing, of course, for the residents, but it remains true to the overall plan that has been presented publicly, and I'm very much in support of that.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Ms. Magdalene?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask if the school committee voted on this plan?
To Vice Chair Ragsdale, to speak to any discussions the school committee had relative to Article thirty-two.
The, this plan was presented to the school committee. I don't recall if we actually took a vote on the current form of it. I mean, we, we voted on the broader plan to relocate Wildwood to the middle school, but I think that the specific details of what the architectural plans were, there was, that's a level of implementation that was, was not presented to us specifically. But, if I may continue just to speak to the issue, one of the reasons that the cost was able to come down was that the revised plan was able to locate bathrooms in a place where there already was plumbing, or essentially next to other bathrooms. So, rather than having to just construct bathrooms essentially from scratch, which was part of the original thought and idea. So, that's part of why the cost was able to come down so much, and then in addition, those were ideas, you know, before we put anything out to bid, we wanted to make sure we had the necessary money in order to, you know, cover the project. But now that we have actually, you know, gotten more information on what the cost will be, the number has fortunately been able to come down. But we believe that this will cover exactly what we need for this project, and is not compromising the project from what was originally intended.
Okay, I'm going to go to Mr. McDonald, and then Ms. Plowman, and back to you, Ms. Benelli.
Just a few questions, Mr. Moderator. Can you tell us how many students are actually enrolled at the Early Education Center?
At the, at the Wildwood? I'm trying to get a sense of what your question is.
Looking to relocate them, and then...
How many students had to be relocated, is that your question?
How many students have been relocated, and what's the average enrollment in the Early, Early Childhood Education Center? Does anybody have that number?
I'm not quite sure what average enrollment entails.
Like, for three years, if there's like, maybe fifty, a hundred, a hundred and fifty, you take the three, add them up together, and divide it by three, and that's the average?
So, the, the average number of students enrolled at the Wildwood Early Childhood Center, is that your...
The existing amount and the average, say, over the last three years?
All right, I'm going to go to Mr. Rogero, if you could speak to the average number of students that are generally enrolled at the Wildwood Early Childhood Center.
Paul Rogero, Assistant Superintendent of Administration of Finance. I don't have the, I have this, this current school year, we have a hundred and seventy-seven students in pre-K and K enrolled at the Wildwood Early Childhood Center, and that number's been pretty consistent the last couple of years as well. I just don't have the exact numbers for the two previous fiscal years.
Thank you, Mr. Rogero.
Okay. The other two questions I had, Mr. Moderator, relative to the article where it said transfer from available funds, I just wanted to know, how much money is in free cash, and how much money is in a stabilization fund?
Mr. Hall, if you have the balances available to you on free cash and capital stabilization, feel free to...
Free cash is approximately twenty-seven point two million, and I believe the capital, and I don't, will take me a minute to get it, but I believe it's approximately twelve million.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Last question, Mr. McDonald.
I just had a comment, because the reason why I asked how many students were in the Wildwood Early Education Center, because this here is just going to be temporary, and Mr. Hall stated previously that we're looking to build a new early education center for about a hundred million dollars for a hundred and seventy-seven students.
Mr. McDonald, please constrain your comments to the scope of the article, which is to accommodate the students and staff at the Wildwood Early Childhood Center at the middle school, and to renovate sections of the middle school in order to accomplish that.
Thank you for letting me know that.
Ms. Plowman?
I just...
I'm going to go for further discussion to Ms. Plowman.
Melissa Plowman, One Fifty-three Main Street. Thank you for clarifying some of the concerns, I just, some of the priorities of this relocation were, so I'm just seeking confirmation, I guess, from Dr. Brand, and for information for the wider public. So, the priorities were an outdoor play space for these students, and although this is temporary, just to remind folks, this is a five to seven-year window, so we, we are, it is essential that we are providing these students with an outdoor play space, adequate bathroom facilities that are accessible and easy to supervise, and also, which hasn't been spoken about, is a separate entrance to this wing of the building that is equipped with a security system. So, if Dr. Brand could just confirm that those priorities that were identified by the Wildwood Building Committee are in fact still being implemented in this project.
Dr. Brand, on the question of the scope of work that would be done under this article?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, I can confirm that. Later in this meeting, we have a presentation and an update to the residents on both this project as well as the MSBA project. All of the priorities, in addition to, in addition, other key elements that will better improve the teaching and learning conditions for the Wildwood students and staff are at the heart of this project.
Mr. Moderator, I move the question.
All right, the motion, or the, there's a motion to move the previous question. The motion to move the previous question is, is a motion to end debate, and allow the maker of the main motion, which would be Mr. Ragsdale, up to ten minutes to address the assembly. There is no debate on a motion to move the previous question, so...
Can I make a second motion?
I'm sorry?
Can I make a motion before we vote on moving the question?
We cannot, it has been, the motion has been made and seconded, so we're going to move immediately into voting on the motion to move the previous question. A motion to move the previous question, again, ends debate on the main motion on Article thirty-two. Mr. Ragsdale will then have up to ten minutes, if he so chooses, to address the assembly, and then we would go to an ultimate vote on the main motion on Article thirty-two. So, if you are, the motion has been made and seconded, again, there's no discussion on a motion to move the previous question. If you are in favor of any debate on Article thirty-two, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, say no.
Nay.
Okay, I'm going to say that it meets a two-thirds majority, I can do that on a procedural motion, so the question has been moved. Mr. Ragsdale, you are invited, but you are not obligated to address the assembly on your motion on Article thirty-two. You have up to ten minutes, if you so choose. You also may yield your time, if you would like to, as well.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I will not be using ten minutes of time, but I will very briefly address the assembly. Ever since the Wildwood Early Childhood Center was closed, we have been looking for the right solution to house our Wildwood students and staff, to continue providing them with the education that they are entitled to, and a tremendous amount of work has been done, just countless hours of time spent and work done between the administration and the Wildwood Building Committee and the school committee to find an appropriate interim solution, which, again, is an interim solution, but is going to be something that is going to have to last for, as Ms. Plowman had previously said, potentially, you know, five years down the road. So, it's not a short amount of time, and, you know, the current solution that we have in place, where Wildwood students are split across three different schools throughout the district, is really not something that is sustainable. And for many reasons, which I won't get into, they are not together as a community, they are spread out geographically, there are many staff that have to travel between the district from school to school, and therefore, students are missing out on instructional time because there is so much travel time. So, the solution that we have finally hit upon of splitting the school and creating a campus on Carter Lane, so that some students are housed at the west and the remainder at the middle school, we are absolutely convinced is both the best interim solution that will provide appropriate educational spaces and appropriate learning environments for the Wildwood students, and that also is fiscally responsible to the town, and something that the taxpayers can proudly and enthusiastically support as an appropriate solution while we continue the long-term solution of building another elementary school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. So, we are on to the vote on Article thirty-two, which is for the amount of five hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars to renovate sections of the Wilmington Middle School to accommodate the relocation of Wildwood Early Childhood Center staff and students, and for relocation costs and furnishings and equipment, including design and engineering costs, site preparation and construction costs. If you are in favor of that amount, again, five hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars on Article thirty-two, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article thirty-three, which is for a sum of money for the replacement and upgrade of public address PA systems at the early childhood centers, elementary, and intermediate schools. Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Stephen Turner, Fifty-Nine Washington Avenue. I move that forty-five thousand dollars be raised and appropriated from the FY twenty-four tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the Superintendent of Schools with the approval of the school committee for the replacement and upgrade of public address systems at the early childhood centers, elementary, and intermediate schools, including any incidental or related costs and expenses.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article thirty-three. Discussion. Mr. McDonald?
Yes, um, his motion seemed to read a little different than what I'm reading up there, but I just have a question, Mr. Moderator. With regard to available funds, maybe this is for the manager. With regard to stabilization funding, is it accurate to say that stabilization funds get transferred from free cash?
Mr. McDonald, we are on a motion to replace the PA systems at some of our schools.
Yes, I was just trying to decide if I need to ask for this money to come from stabilization funding or free cash, and I just wanted to see if I could get that clarification from the manager, if in fact, the stabilization fund was transferred from the free cash to the stabilization fund.
Mr. McDonald, the motion presently before the assembly would appropriate these funds from the fiscal twenty-four tax levy and other general revenues of the town.
Do you see up the, up the screen?
Yeah, so, Mr. McDonald, we've discussed...
Mr. Moderator?
The structure, Mr. McDonald...
Point of order?
Mr. McDonald, I'm going to explain the structure of this article as I have in the past. Many articles you will see start off the same way, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, comma, transfer from available funds, or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute. That sets the universe of options for which something can be paid for, and then it goes on to a sum of money, which is a vague, vague clause, which allows the motion to control how much money is then going to be up for consideration to appropriate, and then it describes what we're being, what we're paying. So, the motion is going to read differently from how the article is written in the warrant, as has been done for the last thirty-two.
Mr. Moderator, point of order. With regard to the law, with regard to advertising the articles to the general public and the taxpayers, I believe that the article that gets put forward to the body here, by law, has to be what's advertised, unless the gentleman who presents the article would like to amend it. Maybe the town council could chime in on this.
Mr. McDonald, I'm quite confident that to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, to pay for that from the fiscal twenty-four tax levy and other general revenues of the town is within that scope. Town Council, if you care to confirm?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator, for you to the meeting. The, the article itself, as, as moderator has explained, lays out all of the, the options for the town. The, the speaker just essentially misstated the process. The moderator is correct. The article lays it out and gives the warning to the voters of various options. The motion that we're looking at is to take the money from the tax levy, that is raise and appropriate. That is the warning contained within the article. The article allows other options for consideration, but those would have to be made pursuant to the motion. The current motion is to take the funds from the tax levy.
My, my, my question is, how can he present an article that's different than what's advertised in the book, up on the screen, and narrow it down and exclude the transfer of, from available funds? How is that legal?
Mr. McDonald, as has been discussed throughout today's proceedings and prior town meetings, motions need to be within the scope of an article, and the motion that was made by Mr. Turner is well within the scope of the article as it's written. That it is different is not, does not create an illegality, because all of the motions that we have heard so far on each of the articles read differently than the articles that are written in the warrant.
He narrowed it down, and he just, the attorney just said he misstated it.
I don't believe that council said that the motion was misstated.
Mr. Moderator, again, the, the article gives a range of options. The motion may be narrower than the article, so when you say it excludes, it in fact specifies the motion. It is, it is required by this meeting to determine the funding source for any article. This motion has determined that funding source. You must have a specific funding source. You cannot have a range of funding sources unless you specify the amount to come from each funding source. In this case, the determination was made to have the funding come from the tax levy. That is within the scope of the article, as determined by the moderator, and therefore is a lawful motion.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to have you note my opposition to this and my disagreement with the attorney, but I would still like to have my question answered. If Mr. Hall would be willing to tell us if the stabilization fund money has been transferred from past free cash funds, yes or no question?
Mr. McDonald, that's outside of the scope of this article and the motion that's currently up for discussion.
I think the answer is yes.
Further discussion, Ms. Toth.
Question I have is just clarification on the article that we are, are voting for money to upgrade the PA system for early childhood centers, elementary, and intermediate schools. If the early childhood centers, or center, Wildwood, is dispersed between two different schools that are not on this list, are we upgrading their PA systems, or are the childhood centers not being, being removed, the money to do that for the childhood centers are being removed from the amount, which means is, if, for me to clarify, we don't have two childhood centers, we have two other school systems that are not included in the upgrade right now. Is the money going to be put on hold for the childhood centers, or is it going to be expended to upgrade the PA systems in the middle school and the west?
Mr. Lord?
Ken Lord, Director of Technology. This article is a, we've been, had this article multiple years, as we replaced intercoms across all of our school systems. The funding for this specific year's article will address the intercom at the Boutwell School, and additional hallway speakers at the Woburn Street School. This is the final phase of a multi-year intercom project.
So, for clarification, this was just an overall request, the second phase of, of replacing?
Exactly, the third phase.
Or the third phase?
Yes, it's the third and final phase. No work was done at the Wildwood.
Okay. I guess I'm still a little confused, but I will accept that explanation. Thank you.
Further discussion on Article thirty-three. See none, we'll call for the vote. If you are in favor of forty-five thousand dollars for the replacement and upgrade of the public address PA systems at the early childhood centers, elementary, and intermediate schools, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article thirty-four, which is for a sum of money for the school department for the replacement of a voice-over internet protocol VoIP phone systems at all school buildings, including any incidental or related costs and expenses, or taking any other action related thereto. Mr. Fenley?
Good morning, Mr. Moderator. Excuse me, Jesse Fenley, Forty-Five Andover Street. I move that two hundred thousand dollars be raised and appropriated from the FY twenty-four be raised and appropriated from the FY24 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the superintendent of schools with the approval of the school committee for the replacement of a voice over internet protocol phone system at all school buildings, including any incidental or related costs and expenses.
Thank you, Mr. Fenley. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 34. Discussion. Seeing none, if you are in favor of Article 34 and the sum of $200,000 for the school department for the replacement of a voice over internet protocol VoIP phone system at all school buildings, so indicate by saying aye. Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article 35 is pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to create a special purpose stabilization fund to be known as the opioid settlement stabilization fund and further to adopt the last paragraph of said 5, Section 5B and to dedicate to such fund without further appropriation, 100% of the opioid litigation settlement funds recovered by the town and further to transfer from available funds a sum of money equal to that previously received by the town from opioid litigation settlements resulting from the town's participation in the national opioid multi-district litigation into said opioid settlement stabilization fund. Ms. Missally?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. To see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to create a new special purpose stabilization fund to be known as the opioid settlement stabilization fund, which may be expended for all of the purposes allowed by law, including those outlined in applicable opioid litigation settlement documents, a document prepared by the Substance Abuse Bureau of the Commonwealth's Office of Health and Human Services Department found at HTTPS colon slash slash www.mass.gov slash doc slash Massachusetts dash abatement dash term slash download entitled Abatement Strategies inconsistent with any state guidelines or regulations further clarifying allowable uses of opioid litigation settlement funds and further to adopt the last paragraph of said 5B and dedicate to such fund without further appropriation, 100% of the opioid litigation settlement funds received by the town and further to transfer from available funds, free cash, $109,109.41, such amount equal to that previously received by the-
Ms. Missally, does the remainder of your motion read as it does in the book?
Yes, it does.
I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 35. Discussion. Mr. McDonald?
Yes, can you repeat the amount of money that the town received in opioid funds? And as I read the article behind you, Mr. Moderator, it says pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B. So my question is relatively simple. If there's a law that is on the books to control where this money goes, why are we voting for a stabilization fund?
I'm going to go to Town Council on the question of how provisions of Mass General Laws are adopted by town meetings.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. The reference to the statute is actually a reference to the statute that controls stabilization funds. So this article is intended to address a couple of issues with respect to the, the deposit of the opioid settlement funds. So the town has received opioid settlement funds. The way Massachusetts law works under Chapter 44, Section 53 of the General Laws, funds that are received by the town unless otherwise provided for by law go into the town's general fund. So these stabilization, these settlement funds would be placed directly into the town's general fund. However, the settlement itself specifies how those funds may be expended. So unlike the usual course of action with, with general fund monies, which are then simply appropriated by town meeting for whatever purpose is determined appropriate by town meeting, in this case, the settlement agreement itself limits what can be done with these funds. So even though they go into the general fund, they can only be expended for opioid remediation purposes. So the intent of this article is to take the, the monies that have already been received from opioid settlements in addition to future opioid settlement monies and place them into what will be known as a special stable stabilization fund created pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 5B of the General Laws so that this opioid settlement stabilization fund would be the repository of all opioid settlement monies that come into the town so that town meeting can then appropriate monies out from that stabilization fund specifically for opioid remediation purposes. The reason we're accepting a portion of the statute is there is a provision in the statute that allows the town to essentially dedicate a stabilization fund and allow the funds so dedicated, not less than 25%, in this case it would be 100% of the opioid funds to go directly into the stabilization fund without having to go through any other process. And this allows, again, these opioid stable, these opioid settlement funds to be placed in a single fund to be used for the, the exact purposes for which the settlement agreement was, was approved by the, by the court in this, in this litigation.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moderator, I guess one of my concerns was would the town have to put out for bids the appropriation of this money? For example, let me just give you a scenario. Like, there's a detox center that was built down the street and-
Mr. McDonald, we're gonna, we're gonna take this piecemeal. Would the town need to go to bid for where the stabilization, stabilization, stabilization fund, excuse me, would be held?
Mr. Moderator, depending on what uses are made of the funds, there's a potential that some of those uses might be subject to, to bidding. This statute doesn't, or this, this article doesn't relate to the future use. It simply relates to the depositing of these funds into a stabilization fund.
Thank you.
Okay, the other question was, I believe the police department hired a lady to deal with the opioid problem. And my question is, could this money be used to fund her salary?
So Town Council to you, would the terms of the settlement that is approved by the court make permissible the payment of the substance abuse and health and wellness coordinator's salary?
Through you, Ms. Moderator. That, we would have to look at exactly if, if the, if the individual is doing work that's consistent with the settlement agreement with respect to remediation of, of the opioid crisis, that's a possibility. That would have to be examined. But again, this article is not addressing how the money is going to be expended. It's addressing how the money is going to be retained.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Toth?
John Toth, 54, for Uranza Drive. This may be clear to everybody, but when you say fund and the monies that are coming in, is that segregating this money into, say, like a separate bank account?
Ms. Moderator, through you again. Yes, that's the purpose of establishing the special stabilization fund. These monies will be separate and apart from the town's general fund, from the treasury, and so they could be maintained and monitored and would then be solely used for opioid remediation based upon future appropriation by town meeting.
Thank you. Further discussion on Article 35. Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. If you are in favor of Article 35, again, the Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 35. Okay, it wasn't just me. To pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to create a new special purpose stabilization fund to be known as the opioid settlement stabilization fund and further to adopt the last paragraph of said Sections 5B and dedicate to such fund without further appropriation, 100% of the opioid litigation settlement funds, that being the sum of $109,109.41, 100% of the opioid settlement funds received by the town and further to transfer from available funds a sum of money equal to that previously received by the town, that's that same figure, from opioid litigation settlements resulting from the town's participation in the national opioid multi-district litigation into said opioid stabilization fund. If you are in favor of that amount and everything I just rambled off, so indicate by saying aye. Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article 36, for a sum of money to deposit in the other post-employment liability trust fund established in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 32B, Section 20. Mr. Bendel?
Mr. Moderator, I move that $1 million be raised and appropriated from the FY24 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be deposited in the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 32B, Section 20.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, a call for the vote. If you are in favor of Article 36, again, Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 36. The sum of $1 million to deposit in the other post-employment liability trust fund established in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 32, Section 20, so indicate by saying aye. Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article 37, which is for a sum of money to deposit in the capital stabilization fund as established by vote on Article 23 at the April 27, 1991 annual town meeting. Mr. Cairo?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $1,242,000 be appropriated from the FY24 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be deposited in the capital stabilization fund as established by vote on Article 23 at the April 27, 1991 annual town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Cairo. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 37. Discussion. Mr. McDonald?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. A previous question that I asked was how much money is in the stabilization fund now? And the answer was $12 million. So we're being asked to tax people to raise, what was it? Mr. Cairo, can you repeat that amount?
The amount was $1,242,000.
Okay, so there's $12 million in the stabilization fund and Mr. Cairo is making the motion to raise through taxation another large amount of money, 1.1.1 million 240,000? Am I correct?
It should be appropriated from the fiscal 24 tax levy and other general revenues of the town.
And that's not narrowed down? It's definitely through other revenues also?
It's through taxation, Mr. McDonald.
Okay. I just wanted to voice my opposition to this. We have $12 million in a stabilization fund. We have $27.2 million in free cash. And quite honestly, when I was watching the Finance Committee meeting, I was quite disturbed when I heard that, I believe it was 800 and something thousand dollars that was appropriated at the last meeting for boilers that didn't get replaced or need to get replaced, which went into free cash. And so to be quite honest with you, I don't know why people aren't sick of the game that's being played with them. So I'm opposed to this. That's all I want to say.
Further discussion on Article 37. Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. If you are in favor of $1,242,000 to be deposited in the capital stabilization fund as established by vote on Article 23 at the April 27, 1991 annual town meeting, so indicate by saying aye. If you're opposed, say no. Voted. Article 38, which is for a sum of money to pay the Middlesex Retirement System in addition to the annual assessment. Mr. DePalma?
I move that a sum of $1 million be raised and appropriated from the FY24 tax levy and other general revenues of the town for payment to the Middlesex Retirement System in addition to our annual assessment.
Thank you, Mr. DePalma. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 38. Discussion. Mr. McDonald?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Through you, a question for Mr. DePalma?
No, you can ask me your question and I will try and queue it up to whoever I feel is most appropriate to answer it.
Okay, so we're being asked to put money into the Middlesex Retirement System. Correct me if I'm wrong, but each employee that is employed by the town of Wilmington gets money from their checks, from their salaries put into that initially? Is that correct?
Mr. Hull?
That's correct.
And my next question is, what type of due diligence scrutiny is being put on the Middlesex County Retirement Board to see that their investments are making money, generating income so that we're not bailing them out? In, in other words, if they're investing in, in some FTX cryptocurrency?
Okay, Mr. McDonald, I'm going to try to rein in your inquiry.
I'd like to just try to get, get some answers to that.
Just at the level of-
Type of due diligence?
Mr. Hull, if you can, can comment on the diligence that goes into assessing the Middlesex Retirement System?
Well, certainly there is a board that reviews the decisions that are made, but I believe and I would defer to the finance director that most, if not all, of those monies are put in a state investment program.
Mr. Perry?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Moderator. The town manager is correct. The Middlesex County Retirement System is overseen by the, basically the state board. And then the money is invested in what's called perimeter print, which is basically a very strict guidelines as to how these funds can and can't be invested. But I can't speak beyond that. That I recommend probably having to speak to the board themselves to get more answers on that. That's beyond the scope of my knowledge here.
And, Mr. Moderator, can, can anybody tell us what kind of return has been made, even just last year? If somebody has an average over the last two or three years, what type of, have, have they made a positive cash flow?
Mr. McDonald, this, the motion that is before the assembly now is whether or not to make an additional payment, a payment in addition to the annual assessment in the amount of $1 million. So I don't want to go further down the rabbit hole as to-
No problem. Can, can, no problem. Gotcha. Can I just have the manager ask, answer this question? Do you have a number for all the employees that are employed by the town that the number would represent how much money from their salaries that the town has to pay into the Middlesex County Retirement Board, exclusive of this article? How much every year they, like, for example, last year, Mr. Hull, do you know how much they've paid into the Middlesex County Retirement Board?
Mr. Hull, Mr. McDonald, I'm trying to understand the question you're asking. Are you asking for the-
Okay, so we're looking for this amount of-
Let me, let me try and see if I understand it. Are you asking for the total sum of money that, that came out of the paychecks for all town employees that went to the Middlesex Retirement System last year?
Any amount of money that the town paid that was taken out of employees' checks that went into the Middlesex County Retirement System.
I think the answer to my question is yes. So, Mr. Hull or Mr. Perry, do either of you have any idea how much money came from the salaries of town employees to the Middlesex Retirement System last year?
I, I cannot say what the aggregate amount of money that came from all the employees is, no.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stand to oppose this article for the, for the reasons I don't see due diligence being done here. I don't see anybody being able to stand up and say, this is the amount of money that was returned from their investments. This is the amount of money that the town pays into it. So until we have some respectable due diligence presentations, I don't think I can support this.
Mr. McDonald, your comments are out of order and you're done speaking on this article. You, you have continued to be disruptive. I do not wish to expel you from the meeting, but Mass General Laws, Chapter 17, does give me the authority to do that if you continue to be disruptive. So again, I'm not looking to kick anyone out of the meeting, but if you continue to be disruptive, I will have you removed. Further discussion on Article 38.
Moderator?
Mr. Hull?
I, I would just note that the purpose of this piece is that the town of Wilmington, along with all the other towns in the Middlesex Retirement System and across the state, have a responsibility to make payments into the retirement system and we have a, a liability that is, needs to be retired by 2037. The premise here is that in addition to the annual payments that we make to the Middlesex Retirement System, similar to what you might do on your mortgage, you can pay the, the minimum amount or you can pay an additional amount and expedite, expedite the retirement of that obligation. And that is the purpose of this article so that in addition to the required payment, we're making an additional payment so that we can advance our ability to cover that liability.
Further discussion on Article 38. Seeing none, a call for the vote. If you are in favor of the sum of $1 million to be paid into the Middlesex Retirement System in addition to the annual assessment, so indicate by saying aye. Opposed, say no. Voted. Article 39, to see what sum the town will vote to transfer into various line items of the fiscal year 2023 budget from other line items of said budget and from other available funds or take any other action related thereto. Mr. West?
Mr. Moderator, I move that $130,000 be transferred from the following fiscal year 2023 accounts. Public Works, Contractual Services, Snow and Ice, $130,000. The entire amount of available funds being $130,000 to the following fiscal year 2023 accounts. Police salary, police department salary, overtime, $130,000. Total, $130,000.
Thank you, Mr. West. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Ladies and gentlemen, your booklet reads that the Finance Committee took no action on this article just prior to today's meeting. The Finance Committee did meet and they did discuss Article 39. Mr. Dougherty, what is the Finance Committee's recommendation to the Assembly?
Approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dougherty. Discussion on Article 39. Seeing none, I want to call for the vote. If you are in favor of transferring $130,000 from the Department of Public Works, Contractual Services, Snow and Ice, to the police department salary overtime, again, on- Police Department Salary Overtime, again, on Article thirty-nine, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. On to Article forty. Article forty is, the subject property is contained on map on page twenty-two in your warrant booklet. It is to authorize the Select Board to acquire by gift, purchase eminent domain, or otherwise all or a portion of the property, or any interest therein, located at three thirty-three Andover Street, and shown on Assessor's Map R1, Lot twenty-one A. Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that three million, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars be appropriated from available funds, free cash, to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain, or otherwise all or a portion of the property, or any interest therein, including any structures or improvements thereon, and temporary access easement thereon, located at three hundred and thirty-three Andover Street, and shown on Assessor's Map R1 as Lot twenty-one A, for municipal purposes of locating a fire police substation, or other municipal facility thereon, and for active and passive recreational uses, as determined by the Select Board, to be in the best interest of the town, including all costs incidental and related thereto, including, but not limited to, the appraisal, the assessment costs, and further to authorize the Select Board to acquire said property by gift, purchase, or eminent domain, or otherwise take such actions and execute such documents and agreements as are necessary to effectuate the purpose of this article.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. I'll accept that as the main motion is there. A second. Motion has been made and seconded. Ladies and gentlemen, the Finance Committee, it is noted in your booklet, recommended approval of this article. They did meet just prior, again, to today's meeting to reconsider their vote. Mr. Dougherty, what was the recommendation after that meeting this morning?
It was approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dougherty. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Very briefly, folks, I would just like to set the table, then yield my turn to Mr. Town Manager, who has a few slides to help depict this. But I believe that this is a unique opportunity for our community in our long pursuit of a North Wilmington Fire Police Station. And I believe that this has been endorsed by the majority of the Select Board, the Finance Committee. And at this time, I'd like to yield to the Town Manager to give you a better idea of the location, potential uses, and costs.
Mr. Hall?
This property, the town has had its eye on for quite some time, since really the mid-nineties. Certainly, my predecessor was involved over the years in discussions with representatives of the family to acquire the property. Unfortunately, for any number of reasons, it did not happen. And one of the circumstances, as we all know, there were other large projects that came along, and such as the public safety building, and the middle school, more recently, the high school. So our shifted, our focus shifted a bit. And one of the reasons that we were not as aggressive in those years is the recognition that the property did not appear to be under any kind of an urgent sale. The property has remained in this sale mode for some period of time. More recently, the property appears to be under some kind of an agreement. We're not sure exactly what the terms are, or a potential agreement, with a development firm. We believe that the time is now to pursue this property. This is similar to an approach that we've taken with other properties. I would note, when the Archdiocese of Boston contacted us about the property next to St. Dorothy's, and that property, before it went on the market, we saw fit to pursue that property, recognizing that we would have potential public uses for it. Similarly, the entile property, when there was a window of opportunity in the bank, after foreclosing on the prior owners, came to the town, or the town pursued that. This circumstance also presents itself. This property, as you know, has been farmland for many years. As Board Member Bendel noted, there is a number of potential uses that we envision for this, one being a fire substation. If you've been up in that neck of the woods, it is close to the Foster's Pond area. There's a trail system in there. There's also trails extending into the town of Andover. So there's certainly those kind of opportunities. Also, the opportunity for athletic fields. All of those things, I think, are compelling. Not, also, not to disregard the fact that this is probably the largest piece of property, undeveloped property, or largely undeveloped property, that remains in the town. So it's certainly my belief that it is appropriate for the town meeting to authorize the board to pursue this property, and to provide the financial wherewithal to do that. And at this point, I would be open to any questions.
Further discussion on Article forty. Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, if you don't believe anything else I say, you better heed what I'm about to say on this article. This is a very, very dangerous, hugely financially impacting article. This is looking to take it by eminent domain. I did what I think was the responsible thing, and I went and knocked on the door of one of the property owners to actually try to get some information. And I met with the husband of one of the property owners, and he told me that the property is under agreement, and that there is a purchase and sales agreement. And I say that because the laws on the books relative to eminent domain show that you would have to compensate somebody for fair market value. And if this development company, who has a purchase and sales agreement, can show to the court what their profit could be, and the family could show what their sale price is to the developer, you're going to be on the hook for liability for that. The amount that was presented to you today, that's very, very low compared to what you'd have to spend. To give you an example, where the practice field is out here, that was owned by a fraught and family, that was taken, that was bought by a developer and was taken by eminent domain by the town, I think it was like, years and years ago, it was like three hundred thousand dollars that the town paid for that. But then they got sued, and they had to pay like one point three million, like three times what that property was taken for. This is like way, way bigger than that. In addition, if you see that dotted line up there, that's an easement. And I believe it's, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hall, is that owned by National Grid?
That is a easement by New England Power.
New England Power. So, public utility companies, they actually have the ability to take property by eminent domain for public purposes. So the question that I have is, how can the town actually take something from a public utility company by eminent domain? So is that another layer of financial liability that the town would have to incur to get sued by New England Power? So I think, I'm opposed to this, and I don't think you're being presented accurate information as to the liability here. It's like, hey, we could have possibly bought this when it wasn't under agreement to maybe build a school, like some of us wanted to have a school built there. And you could have had parks and fields, and you could have had a substation, and a hockey rink, and all kinds of things. But nope, we had to build a school right here and knock down a twenty-two million dollar building that could have been used for town offices.
Mr. McDonald, you're starting to get off top.
But, that all aside, this is a dangerous article. Please know, folks, that I did my due diligence to what I think, and I went to the family, and I confirmed that there's a purchase and sales agreement. So what you're doing here, right, is you're opening up liability to the town.
All right, Mr. Town Council, two questions to you. First is the effect of a purchase and sale agreement on a potential eminent domain taking. And then the same question as it would relate to a utility easement on a property.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Obviously, we'll take the first question first regarding the purchase and sale agreement. Obviously, any, any private property owner selling their property could enter into a purchase and sale agreement, the property in an eminent domain, if an eminent domain is pursued. And again, the way this article is structured, somewhat different from some of the articles we saw earlier, the motion itself maintains the various options that were contained in the article. So it does, it does allow the town to pursue a number of mechanisms to acquire this property. Eminent domain is simply one tool in the toolbox, and obviously is the preference of last resort. But that being said, the, an eminent domain taking would be based upon a, an appraisal of highest and best use, and that's, that's the legal obligation of the town to make that payment. And so that, that would be determined. And were there to be litigation, the court would be determining what, what is the appropriate appraised value. It's not necessarily related to a purchase and sale agreement, which could have a more speculative number associated with it, that may not be attached to a defensible appraisal. On the second issue with respect to the New England Power easement, the town would be acquiring this property, be it through purchase, gift, or eminent domain, subject to any existing encumbrance. So the town would not be taking the easement that's currently maintained by New England Power. The town would be acquiring the property subject to that easement. Again, with the existence of that easement, that does also indicate a reduction in the value of the property, either to the town or to any developer, because that easement is in place and could not be undermined by the use of the property. So again, the town would be acquiring and paying value based upon the highest and best use as appraised with a legitimate, appropriate appraisal, and would be taking the property, or acquiring the property, I should say, subject to the New England Power easement. Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Rich. I'm going to go first to Ms. Toth, to Ms. Sullivan, to Ms. McCoy. Ms. Toth?
Linda Toth, fifty-four, Fearrenza Drive. Twelve years ago, I built, or I didn't build, but I bought my house on Fearrenza Drive because it would accommodate my growing grandchildren family. Few years into being there, they, there was an article or a, somebody wanted to build housing on the Sharapa Farm. They put in, they did an elaborate presentation and everything. And at that time, it was voted down because of the number of housing units that were going in there, the lack of sewage going in there, and the disturbance of cars driving down a very small two-lane highway between Andover and one-twenty-five. And we thought that that was the end of that property being bought or used for any housing project or large projects. And then, unbeknownst to, I would say, a good portion of the neighborhood, which is just across from the Sharapa Farm, that area that they want to use for a substation, a hockey rink, a recreation center, will add traffic to an already overburdened road. We have industry at the end of Andover Street that goes to one-twenty-five. We have cut-off traffic from Andover to one-twenty-five to ninety-three, both coming and going. We have semi-trucks being repaired. We have Jospin, and we have the other industrial park road at the end. They are building a storage center on Andover. All of that traffic is going to be coming down Andover Street. And if that property is sold, obtained, whatever it is, whatever the improvements that they're going to put on that property is going to add more traffic. I don't have a problem with a substation being there, because our end of town does need to have quick and available fire and police emergencies. The problem is that I don't know how other people on Andover, other residents, would appreciate having the sirens being started at two o'clock in the morning to wake us up. I mean, everybody has that problem. I understand that. Some, something that we would have to cope with. But for me, I'm speaking for myself. I can't speak for my neighbors, or the other people that live on Andover Street that surrounds that property. I think that it would be a bad situation for our cost of, the cost of our house, our houses not being reduced. There's also, if you noticed on the picture that they had showed about the easement, there is wetlands back there. How are you, how are you going to build anything when you have supposedly wet areas that don't drain, drain? And if you look at a property drone picture on some of that land, there is, in the back, there is logs. I have, I've seen trucks with big trees putting logs back there. And there is also a place where there is metal. This is on that property. So how, is the town going to absorb getting rid of all that stuff? So for me, my opinion is that I would not want the town to take this property and leave it and use it for whatever. And not to be nasty, but who's to say that the town would not sell that property to developers to get it, to get out of our forty-B problems that we are having? We do not need any more traffic. We do not need a lot more housing in that area. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. I want to go to Chief Kavanaugh first, just on the very narrow issue, just to provide an explanation on the comment about sirens going off at two in the morning.
Phil Kavanaugh, Two Jones Affair Fire Chief. I think I speak on behalf of Chief Desmond as well. Personnel are very cognizant of when they are activating sirens at night. It's only for safety. And I think if we talk to the people on Church Street, it is not typical that we go roaring down the street at two AM, "I'm up, you're up" type of deal. So I would oppose that notion that we're going to be coming out of there at two AM with the sirens ripping to wake the neighbors up.
Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. Ms. Sullivan?
Suzanne Sullivan, sixty-Lawrence Street. I had just a couple of quick questions. So in the article, it states that a portion of the property, is that because of the Andover section, and the town would not purchase the Andover section? Is that correct?
It's all or a portion of the property. So the scope, as defined in the article, would have, if, if this is the desired course of the Assembly, would permit the Select Board to acquire all of it or a portion of it. And it does not specify with any more specificity within their motion what portion it would be.
Okay, so I'm just imagining, like, it wouldn't, like, be, like, one half and not the other half. Could that potentially happen?
Theoretically, it certainly could be one half or another, but that, all this would do is authorize the Select Board to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain all or a portion of the property behind me.
Okay, all right. My other question was the tax status. I just want to double-check and make sure that it's still not Chapter sixty-one A, or that there's, what the status is at this time.
Mr. Hall?
This property is not under Chapter sixty-one A. I think the last year it was, was two thousand fourteen.
Okay, thank you. That's important to know. Also, recently, there was a proposal to the Board of Selectmen for a development of this property. I would just ask, after the comments previous to mine, about a concern of housing here, could you please just recap quickly? I know we don't have a lot of time. Just quickly- Just quickly, what that proposal entailed?
Ms. Hall.
The proposal that was presented in December to the board called for something in the order of, I believe, 650 units, multi-story, six, seven-story apartment buildings by this particular developer. And that was the concept that they had in mind. A more recent conversation with the developer, they are talking about the prospect of reducing the size of that development, but based upon the numbers, again, very preliminary, that they offered up with something perhaps in the order of 300, give or take, units. But their plan appears to be an apartment development.
Thank you. And just a note, I think I'd rather have a fire substation than 350 units here, if I'm worried about traffic. The other, I'm trying to think, well, the other question, well, it's not really a question, but it's a comment. But my memory is, the reason why the property on Wildwood, where the ball fields are now, cost the town so much money, was because there was inappropriate assessment done of the property, and the town had to pay more money of what the property was worth. And I think it's important to note that. Also, it's also my understanding that the town cannot pay more than the fair market value of this property. Is that true?
Mr. Hall, for that, but to the authority of this meeting, there's a motion right now for $3,798,698. That would be the limit that the select board would be authorized to spend. If there were some reason that would cause that to go above and beyond that, we'd be meeting again to discuss that. And then on the limit of fair market value for the acquiring of a property.
I would defer to counsel on that one.
Mr. Rich.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator, through you. I can clarify a couple of things, as long as I have this opportunity. First, there is actually no statutory limitation on the amount that could be expended for the acquisition of property. It's interesting to note that cities are specifically limited to not being able to pay more than 25% of the assessed value over an average of three years, whereas towns don't have that similar limitation, interestingly. However, of course, if this were to be an eminent domain taking, which is simply an option, that eminent domain taking would be subject to compensation based upon the appraised fair market value, not the assessed value, but the appraised value. And that is somewhat reflected in the dollar amount that is part of the motion that you see today. I think it's also important to point out, I heard a comment about if the town does acquire this property, would the town then sell the property to a developer? And it must be remembered that any disposition of the property, or any development of the property, construction of a police or fire substation, or a recreational facility, would have to come back to town meeting for approval. Town meeting would have to approve the disposition of any property acquired by the town. Town meeting would also have to approve the appropriation of funds to build facilities on the building. So this is, again, merely the ability to acquire this property for specified purposes, then the execution of those purposes would come back to this body for approval, either by appropriation or some other necessary vote.
Thank you very much. That's it for my questions. I appreciate all the feedback. I just want to say, for years, I served on the Open Space Committee back in 1999, 2000, this property was number one on the list to acquire for the town. We don't have any more land, really, in this town. And with all the development, everything that's, you know, all the so-called improvements and the changes, which are, seem almost inevitable, I personally think that we have an obligation to make sure that our townspeople have what they need. And there's been studies done all over the place about how important it is for people to get out into open space and, you know, take a walk in the woods, take a walk with nature. This property, one of the desirable things about this property is it can hook up to extensive trail system, the Avis Trail, which is the Andover Trail System, and also the Bay Circuit Trail System. It's really, really important for us to do the right thing, in my opinion, for the future of the town, for our kids. We've been so good in this town about appropriating money for active recreation, and I always stand in support of that. I also think that the time has come for us to also support some passive recreation in town. If you want passive recreation in this town, you have to leave the town. And economically speaking, it's good to keep people in our town, using our trails, using our space. It helps us tremendously. People will go to stores, they'll spend their money if they come and they stay in Wilmington. I hope everybody stands in favor of this article. I understand that there may be some opposition, but as long as the people are paid fairly for what this property is worth, then I'm all for it. So please, let's do the right thing. Thank you.
We're going to go to Mr. McCoy, and then we go to Mr. DePalma. Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael McCoy, 11 Treasure Hill Road, Wilmington. When I first heard the Board of Selectmen, I mean, I apologize, the Select Board, I've only said Board of Selectmen about 100,000 times, so I'll get it straight. The Select Board, when I saw that they were going to executive session to talk about taking this property, I'm all for it, absolutely. I don't care whose idea it is, I don't care whose idea it is, as long as it's in the best interest of the community. I think that would be a wonderful thing for us to take the property, absolutely. But as time goes on, bear with me, I'm Mr. Moderator, I may need to ask a question, make some commentary, and I'd like to make a commentary in the end. I mean, this is the first now. I'm not watching the Selectmen's meetings. People say, "Did you see the meeting?" I go, "Listen, if you're going to see," you know, I'm not watching a Selectmen's meeting. If you want to see me on the TV, too, then that's where I would be. But I'm very happy being where I'm at, and I just hear things. And from what I understand, that the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board was showing due diligence to take this property. And then tonight, I'm hearing that it's only $3.7 million. And what bothers me is, there was never, and I apologize and get an answer, I don't remember anyone ever talking about a dollar amount relative to this. And that's just one quick question. Has this ever been brought up, the $3.7 million and change, other than today?
I will speak, Mr. Hall, a question to you as to process, as to how that figure was calculated.
So the... When was it disclosed? The question is, when was that $3.7 million and change disclosed? Is this the first we're hearing of it, or did it get brought up at previous meetings? If it did, I apologize. I don't know.
The property was appraised, and we received that information back on April 11th or thereabouts, so it's only been recently that we had the number, and so that is why the number is just being presented more recently.
All right, so that $3.7 million, so is this, would I be safe to say, is this the first that we're hearing, the $3.7 million? Has it been disclosed at a public hearing? Or a public meeting?
I believe the answer is yes, Mr. McCoy.
All right. My only concern is that I was kind of excited to see this happening. I figured it's one of the last large parcels in the town of Wilmington. I know we gave, whether it was large or small, tax breaks for years on that piece of property because it was aquacultural. I don't believe if we were able to buy the whole thing for $3.7. And I'm understanding now that we may have to come back. My message to the Select Board would be, if you need to take it by eminent domain, take it by eminent domain. Go for the whole property, don't try to buy a piece of it, and you're going to see it developed into something else. We talk about traffic on that street. If we develop units on there, it's going to be far worse. I believe, you know, public safety, I believe any municipal use, and I've heard here at town meeting, I've heard at public meetings, that we don't own property here in North Wilmington. We own a large parcel right off Salem Street, and we were thinking years ago of building a high school. That being said, I'm still in favor of us purchasing this property. My message is to the Select Board, stand tall, take it by eminent domain, we gave all these tax breaks for years, we take it under our control. We should utilize that whole piece of property. It's the last great parcel in this community, and it's for multiple uses that the town could use. That's all, and I would really hope that the Board would do that. I'm going to support this article, absolutely, but I would hope, when the time comes, that you folks say, "We're going to grab the whole thing. Take it by eminent domain, buy the whole thing, and it'd be far better for the town." And we do have other large parcels of property here in North Wilmington. Take, I'm for the article, do the right thing, get the whole thing. Thank you.
All right, I want to, is it to clarify or correct, Mr. Hall? Or are you just waiting to get in queue?
I did want to just offer a comment. There was a point made earlier, which I believe was suggesting an issue with affordable housing. I think it's important to note that the town is at, in excess of its 10% with the approval of the West Street project. So in terms of the prospect of someone beyond those, that are in the pipeline now, there is not the ability for a new developer to come in and pursue 40B, so-called 40B affordable housing, because the town is at 10%.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I'm going to go to Mr. DePalma, then Ms. Galezzo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I support this article. There isn't much land left in Wilmington. The one thing that I was, I have been concerned with is a fire public safety substation up in that area. We could build it there and leave the rest of the property alone. If we don't need it right now, we don't need it. But in the long run, we're talking ice skating rink, we're talking a rec center, a new DPW barn. If we need it, we have it. It's there for us. And if not, generations ahead of us will have the opportunity to determine what they want to do with it. But I strongly ask everyone to support the project. Let's move forward, and let's keep some land for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palma. Ms. Galezzo.
For years, we've been talking about a fire substation. This is our chance. This is the piece of land we need to make that happen. Also, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move the question.
I don't think so. Out of order.
No, Mr. McDonald is right. You can't speak and then move the question. Ms. Galezzo, you know better than that. Mr. Ragsdale, in the front. Mr. McDonald, just to let you know, I'm passing you over just because you did already speak, but we'll get to you, but I want to make sure that people that have not yet had the opportunity to speak, get that opportunity, and I'll go back to you. Mr. Ragsdale.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Ragsdale, 18 Marion Street. This property is going to be developed for some purpose at some point, and it's going to be much more to our liking and to the benefit of the town of Wilmington if we control what that purpose is going to be.
My name's Suzanne Cruel, 21 Blueberry Lane, and this property is in my backyard. As a neighbor, I would absolutely support having a fire station, a police station. So God forbid, there's an emergency, they are across the street instead of having to travel 10 minutes away, so that they can do their jobs to help us and keep us safe. It sounds like it's just a matter of time. Would I rather have a developer, or would I rather have the town, police, fire, recreational facility? For me, it's a no-brainer. Let's support the town, let's support our police, our fire, our EMTs, have possibilities for recreation in the future. The other thing to consider, too, is already, our Wildwood students, we don't have spaces for them. If a developer comes in, where are these students going to go? We don't have places for them until our new school is built. So I would absolutely support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. West.
Karen West, 2 Birchwood Road. I'd like to move the question.
I knew that was coming.
Point of order, Mr.?
What is your point of order, Mr. McDonald?
Before the speaker was even up, I had been standing here for a lengthy amount of time, and I don't think that's appropriate, and I don't even think that's an order for her to be recognized over somebody that was here at the microphone before she even thought about getting up there.
Mr. McDonald, you had already spoken once.
I didn't talk about the $30 million that the town would be on the hook for.
Mr. McDonald, you had an opportunity to speak. I got to give everyone in this assembly an opportunity to speak before I go back, and folks get second and third and fourth chances. So as has been established by my predecessors... Mr. McDonald, I am not, as has been established by my, not only myself but my predecessors, we want to make sure that this is a welcoming assembly and that everyone has the opportunity to be heard, and we're not making sure that the microphones are monopolized. So I make sure that folks that have not yet spoken on an article have an opportunity to speak first, unless there is a point of clarif, I'm sorry, to provide an explanation or to correct an error which is pursuant to our inhabitant bylaws. So Mrs. West may have gotten up after you were waiting to speak, and I did say that I was going to go back to you, because you had been waiting, but you did already have an opportunity to speak on this. So we do have a motion to move the previous question. It has been seconded. A motion to move the previous question is to end debate. It would give the maker of the main motion, which is Mr. Bendel, up to 10 minutes, if he so chooses, to address the assembly. Mr. Bendel could choose to yield his time to any other individual in the assembly. Again, a motion to move the previous question is to end debate, with the exception of that addressing of the assembly. There is no debate on a motion to move the previous question. It is a two-thirds majority, but I can make that declaration by a voice vote. So if you are in favor of moving the previous question in Article 40 and ending debate, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If you are opposed, say no. Voted unanimously so. So we are on the main motion on Article 40, which is for $3,798,698. Mr. Bendel, the floor is yours for up to 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll very briefly just say that this is a very unique opportunity, and I encourage all of you to join us in taking advantage of it. Thank you.
Mr. Bendel, you have 9 minutes and 40 seconds left.
I yield back.
All right, this is a two-thirds vote, and I am not permitted to declare the vote by a voice vote on this, so I would ask that the tellers take their places. All right, folks, we haven't had to use them yet, but please get out your purple voter cards. All right, ladies and gentlemen, on the motion on Article 40, to authorize the Select Board to acquire by gift purchase, eminent domain, or otherwise, all a proportion of the property or any interest therein located at 333 Andover Street and shown on Assessor's Map 1 as Lot 21A, the motion as made by Mr. Bendel, if you are in favor of Article 40, the amount, again, $3,798,698, so indicate by rising in your seats and displaying your You can be seated, sorry. Now, you can be seated, sorry. All right, ladies and gentlemen, if you are opposed to Article 40, please rise in your seat and display your purple voter card. Ladies and gentlemen, on the motion on Article 40, we had 148 in the affirmative and 3 in the negative, the measure passes. Mr. McDonald?
Point of order?
What is your point of order?
If someone was to bring this article up for reconsideration, they would need a second to that motion, correct?
And the motion for reconsideration would need to be in order.
Yes. I would like to bring this article that we just voted on up for reconsideration.
All right, Mr. McDonald, you did speak in opposition to this article when it was under discussion the first time.
I've obtained, I've obtained new information, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McDonald, it, the vote literally took place 30 seconds ago. You spoke against the article, the, the measure passed. I did see that you did vote in the affirmative, and now you're making a motion for reconsideration.
I voted for it, which I'm entitled to do by law, okay?
And I'm moving that your motion, Mr. McDonald-
Mr. Moderator? Point of order?
Mr. McDonald, I am explaining what your motion for reconsideration is, why it is out of order. It is purely dilatory. As you spoke against it, you then voted for it, and now you're moving to reconsider. There is no possibility that there is new information or a change in circumstances that has taken place within the last 30 seconds to explain that the reason for your motion for reconsideration is to be anything other than dilatory.
And I'd like to explain the new information and why it is in order. Because the math, when I did a mathematical equation-
Mr. McDonald, you are out of order.
It comes out to $100,000 per lot, times 300 lots is $30 million. These people were not presented with that information, and that's why it's in order.
Mr. McDonald, you're done. We're moving on to Article 46, just by way of explanation. Our inhabitant bylaws, our inhabitant bylaws, Chapter 90, Section 10A, and yes, I'm going to bore you with an explanation of inhabitant bylaws, just so I can calm down for a second, do require that articles that are to appropriate monies for capital expenditures are drawn sequentially. 46, no, we're moving on to 46. This is the explanation. So what that means is Article 46 is an article that would be an expenditure of monies for capital expenditures. So we then have to skip ahead from 40 to 46 before we can move on to random draw. And before we get to that, we are going to get to a presentation from our school superintendent with apologies for me for the delay in that. So we are on for Article 46, which is to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $1,500,000, more or less, to be expended under the direction of the superintendent of schools in consultation with the school committee, Wildwood School Building Committee, and the town manager for the purpose of constructing a safe and conducive learning environment, including site preparation, design costs, costs to retrofit and/or build age-appropriate restrooms for pre-K and kindergarten students, costs to build age-appropriate play structures, equipping and furnishing of classrooms for pre-K and kindergarten students to be educated at the Wilmington Middle School, and all such costs incidental and related thereto, to provide a safe and conducive learning environment with funding for said appropriation anticipated as follows. Raised by taxation, zero dollars. Transfer from free cash, $1,500,000. Transfer from stabilization, zero dollars. Borrow, zero dollars. Other, zero dollars, or take any other action related thereto.
Barb Bogman, 1 Leonard Lane.
Hi, you open, you make a motion on Article 46?
Uh, no. I'm-
Okay, I, I have a motion-
Actually, I don't, okay, go ahead.
There's, there's a motion to pass over Article 46. It has been seconded. Finance Committee recommends disapproval of this article discussion. Seen on, we're going to call for a vote?
Can I discuss?
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, discussion.
So I recognize the challenges with this particular article and when it was submitted in terms of it being sort of out of sequence with where things are on this project right now. But I do want to raise a concern about the fact that the conversation and discussion in this assembly about the 545,000 that had been attributed to was shut down when people were standing in line waiting to have a conversation. And I'm, I'm worried about sort of the approach to shutting down conversation about school investment. This has had a lot of conversation. There's been so many meetings about this, and my question is, when did the bid come in for the 545,000 that got re, that the new bid?
I'm going to go to Mr. Hall on the question on, on the bid. I am going to just address the, the comment about shutting down of conversation. The previous, previous article that dealt with much of the substance that Article 46 came up with, debate was ended through a motion to move the previous question. It's not my decision to make. It's a move, it's a motion that is made by somebody that is a part of this assembly. It does require a two-thirds majority, and there was that. So the assembly did decide that they had heard enough and that they were ready to vote.
So I'm learning some things through this actual meeting, and there were people standing in line before the person made the motion to move the question, and I'm not sure why those people weren't honored in terms of their sequence in, in making, you know, commentary.
If, if that was what happened, that certainly was not my intent.
That's okay.
It can be, it can be difficult to keep track because it's certainly, there was a lot of commentary and four different microphones to keep track of. So certainly, that was, that was not my intent. But an motion to move the previous question is, is made, I, I am required to trust the judgment of the meeting if they're ready to make a decision. To Mr. Hall on the timing of the bid received.
There were two elements to the bid. Filed sub-bids, which are required under this, which is essentially for the plumbing work. The bid came in last week. The general contractor bids came in on the 27th of this month, so whatever that day was, Thursday, I believe.
And to that, just as a follow-up, I'm, that's where I think the, I was surprised by the motion for the Finance Committee to move that through so quickly because clearly it was cut, like very new information. It hadn't been shared publicly, and their chat, conversation was very quickly moved forward. That leaves us to this where we recognize-
If I could just interject very briefly, I should have announced after, after squaring away the motion for discussion, the Finance Committee, and it is in your book, that did recommend approval on that. They did meet just prior to today's meeting to reconsider, given the new information. And Mr. Dougherty, you can confirm that the recommendation remains approval?
Yes, it does.
Approval for?
I'm, I'm sorry, for disapproval on 46. Yes.
Yes, absolutely. And, and I think what we were trying to talk about is sort of whether or not there was opportunity after these new bids came in for, you know, things to, that we, we valued engineered a lot out of that project. And, and I think, you know, now we have new information and it wasn't, there wasn't a lot of availability to discuss that. On, on this, you know, I think, I, I just want to raise that I think there has been a feeling in town meetings that maybe like there isn't opportunities for full conversations about schools and that anything with schools have really targeted financial constraints and, and haven't in, you know, been sort of considered or allowed for discussion about these things. And I think that's why we're seeing articles come forward like this that are sort of out of place and, but, but it's because people, the conversations aren't allowed to happen and there's concern in terms of the approach and conversations that boards have been having about really scrutinizing any spending for the schools. So we want to raise that as, you know, I'm hopeful that, you know, we can continue to participate in the conversations and that we can be a little open and understand that, that there's concerns in the community in terms of the approaches for capital and the approaches for operating and how we're scrutinizing school budgets and that, that I want to make sure that there's an openness to exploring conversations that are non-financially related with respect to schools. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Ms. Galezzo and then to Ms. Pennelli in the back.
So just for a little clarification, the reason why I asked for Dr. Brandon and the town manager to get up and speak on this is to make sure there was collaboration between the town and the school. Mr. Brandon sat there and addressed the audience and said he was quite satisfied with the plan going forward. I don't understand why we keep need to debate it if the schools are okay with this. In the school committee, Mr. Ragsdale said the same. I'm just a little kind of shocked that, you know, we're, we're having the same discussion once again.
I'd like to respond to that.
If, if, you're limited just to provide an explanation or correct an error, just within that narrow scope.
So I'd like to respond to that because I think it was, like, we, we fully back school administration and their perspectives. I think the problem from a citizen perspective is that a, a question was raised about the specifics of the plan, and it was reframed to the administration to say, does this meet your needs? Which is not the citizen question, which was, how is it different than what was presented to the public? And so I think there was information that was asked that wasn't provided. And, and it, it's fine. It's water under the bridge in terms of moving forward. Everyone wants this project to move forward. My commentary is concern about the lack of openness or ability, I, I don't know why commentary was shut down so quickly on that article based on the number of people that had been involved in the process and that would want to understand more about information that just came out yesterday. So that's where my commentary comes from.
Okay, Ms. Pennelli?
Did I hear you properly that the Wildwood, the Wildwood Building School Committee update would include an update on the interim project? That, that, whatever is in Article 2 that we voted agree, does that include addressing the interim project?
So right after this article, Dr. Brandon is going to, go into his, his report that was on Article 2, so-
Before we vote?
No, no, after we're voting on this.
Can I move that we get that presentation before we vote?
Yeah, there, there is an actual question, so we, we can't go forward until we've dealt with the, the motion to pass over Article 46.
Okay, so I would urge our citizens to not, to vote this down just so that we can hear the presentation, and then we can vote on it with that information. Is that fair?
So regardless of how the vote on Article 46 goes, we're going into Dr. Brandon's presentation.
But we're passing over this article. So if Dr. Brandon presents information, I'm like, hey, can we get another $100,000 to resolve something? I don't have that opportunity because Article 6 is no longer on the table. Am I understanding how this works properly?
If there's, if there happens to be new information or a change in circumstances, one could make a motion to reconsider.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that there's still a mechanism for citizens after we get the information. Thank you.
Mr. Hall?
To, to the question about transparency, you know, it, it sounds like some folks are perhaps new to the process, but clearly there has been, in, in certainly my estimation, transparency. All these meetings of the Wildwood School Building Committee have been public. I can't cite the specific dates when those meetings occurred, but I believe that at some point in the later meetings of the Wilmington School Building Committee, that there was discussion about the change in the scope of work. Then separately from that, throughout the month of February, the, the Finance Committee reviews each of the town budgets, all the various departments, the school budget. All those meetings are, are publicly posted. Very few people, if anyone, attends the meetings. They're also covered by WCTV. So, you know, with all due respect, there is, in my estimation, the opportunity for people to hear about these, these projects. Certainly people have busy schedules, I understand that, but to suggest that we're not being transparent, I don't think is fair.
Ms. Sullivan?
Suzanne Sullivan, 60 Loner Street. So I just want everybody to understand, and I want to make sure I understand myself, that what's on the floor right now is to pass over this article.
Correct.
Correct. And then after we vote on that, there'll be a presentation by the superintendent.
So the superintendent's presentation is more broadly on the Wildwood School Building Committee and the status that it's on, primarily within the MSBA process.
Well, I personally am somebody that actually pays attention a lot to what goes on in town. And I'm not saying that there's not transparency. I don't have children anymore in the school systems, but I would generally like to look at this article afterwards. I don't know what the big deal is, is just, you know, I mean, it takes more time to actually do an article to reconsider. I would suggest that we just table the discussion on this article until after we see the superintendent's presentation. I would appreciate that. I'm not constantly going to meetings, every single meeting and hearing everything that's going on at the school. I have all the other stuff that I do. So I would personally like to hear that presentation and then look at this article. So I'm asking the body-
Ms. Sullivan, I believe I heard you say you wish to lay this on the table?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm asking the body, this body not to, to go over this, to pass over this article.
So to lay this article on the table, it would temporarily move us on the metaphorical table. What would happen is then we would then move into Dr. Brandon's report. We could then, someone could make a motion to remove from the table or take from the table. So then we would be on further discussion on the motion to pass over Article 46. So is that your intent?
Yes.
Okay. So you have a motion on the floor to table Article 46. Is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded. Does everyone understand what is, what the motion on, on the floor is? It's motion to lay on the table, discussion is permitted. Essentially, it hits pause on Article 46. We do, and this disposes of this temporarily. So what would happen is if a motion to lay Article 46 on the table passes, we essentially hit pause, we then hear Dr. Brandon's presentation, and then after that presentation, somebody could make a motion to take from the table, Article 46.
Mr. Moderator? Point of order? Mr. Carr? Could we get some clarification from legal? Now you have two motions out there on this. Now you have two motions out there on this, please.
Mr. Rich?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I, I think there is a little bit of confusion because we have a motion to pass over and then we have a motion to lay on the table. The, because you have the pending motion to pass over, this motion to lay on the table would be laying on the table the motion to pass over, not the, not the main motion as, that, that could have been made. There was no, the, there was no actual affirmative motion made on the article, instead it was a motion to pass over. If, if, if the voters would want to have further discussion on it, they could vote down the motion to pass over and then it might be appropriate to then lay the article on the table to allow for the presentation. I, I, it's a little concerning to lay on the table a motion to pass over.
Mr. Moderator, I, I will, I, I can withdraw that motion. I just want to make sure that this article can be viewed by this body after the superintendent's presentation.
Okay, so I'm going to declare it as the general consent of the meeting to allow Ms. Sullivan leave to withdraw her motion to table. So you have a motion to pass over Article 46. Further discussion. Mr. Doherty?
This article starts a process at 1.5 million with the state law. You need an OPM, you know, owner project manager. And then you, they have to go to bid. Then from bid, you have to go to get a contractor and a designer. Another, two, two things to go out to bid. So it takes a long time to get those bids in, interview the people and get it approved. So if we want to have things done at the middle school, we could have them done for September of 2024. You know, we want them done this year. We've already approved, no, if, if we went with this article, it would, it would delay it probably a year. You know, we already have an article that we've approved to get the work done so the kids can have their bathrooms and everything else this year. You know, why are we delaying it? You know, what we need is action. And that's why I, I made the motion to pass over, you know? We don't need this, it creates more, it's more cumbersome at this figure than the figure we have. Thank you.
Further discussion on 46. Seeing that we're going to call for a vote on a motion to pass over Article 46. If you are in favor of passing over Article 46, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, say no. Motion to pass over passes unanimously. Dr. Brand, at long last, you are up for your presentation of the Wildwood School Building Committee.
I hope you're not disappointed with this presentation. There's a lot on the table here. Well, I'll wait for it to come up. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We did have good morning in the beginning parts, but I know it's afternoon now, so we're going to shift to that. But good afternoon to residents who are here and for those that may be at home watching. My name is Glenn Brand, Superintendent of Schools. It's my privilege and pleasure to provide residents with an update on the Wildwood School itself. There are really, as you are getting a sense, two very important, somewhat connected, but certainly two very important projects related to the Wildwood. And over the next number of slides, it's my intent to provide an update to the community at large, obviously recognizing that this is really very important on a number of different levels. Well, the focus of this report is centered on the Wildwood staff, students and families. It really represents so much more, I believe, for the Wilmington community at a critical juncture for the future of not just the Wildwood on an interim basis, but also with the need to look towards the longer term view of our school system. Next slide, please. Let me begin first with an update on what we're referring to as the interim plan, has been mentioned here a couple of times in previous articles. Next slide. For a number of years now, attention has increasingly focused on the age of our elementary school facilities throughout the community. The growing concerns have particularly centered on the Wildwood School as it has faced ongoing struggles with its operations as our oldest operating school in the town built in 1955. Following the unfortunate development that led to an oil leak as a result of human error from the company contracted to filling the oil tanks for heating, it became clear that moving out of the school facility during this time of the oil cleanup was absolutely in the best interests of everyone. In February of 2022, there was a joint decision made between senior leadership members of the town and school department that for a variety of reasons, it was not in the best interest of anyone for the school to reopen. This decision placed us and the town on a path that was always considered a possibility, but now represented a real challenge. And we soon thereafter enlisted the assistance of the Wildwood Building Committee to help identify options. The decision to do what is possible to seek ways to establish sound teaching and learning conditions for our Wildwood community are highlighted by, I believe, four fundamental key factors. They are indeed our youngest students throughout the district. And even though their time in the early childhood center, whether that be at the Bowwell or the Wildwood is short, they are most certainly our most vulnerable. And indeed, an early investment in these young citizens of this community not only is something that we owe to our staff and families, but also serves as something that represents the best possible start to their formal education of our students, which down the road is something that benefits everyone. Next slide. Keeping in mind that by the time that the decision to close the Wildwood School was made last year, the town already knew that we were accepted into the MSBA or Mass School Building Authority Building Program. And therefore, we knew that we needed a short term or an interim option to locate the Wildwood students and programs. In a hurry, we had to decide on splitting up the Wildwood into three different schools. Anything but ideal, but we had no choice. And that's where they remain this year. To explore the possibilities, we explored, sorry, we secured the assistance of Doran Whittier, third party consultant, who knows schools and school facilities and knows how to understand the possibilities for a community. They scoured our current building capacity, looked at possibilities outside the district as well, such as renting or leasing corporate space, and explored within our school system even the possibility of grade level shifts in order to accommodate the Wildwood students. There were three challenges with all of the many options, and there were many, 16, I believe in fact, that were identified. Those challenges included the overall costs. Some of those options, for those that may have been following that work, would have noted that those exceeded 10, 15 million dollars in some cases. The majority of them, certainly possible with additional funding, would also take time to completion, something that we felt was certainly a factor as we were contending with this situation. Many required such, for example, temporary classrooms or modular classrooms that could not be ordered and delivered immediately. The lead time, well over a year away. And as mentioned, some of the solutions involved the disruption of other school communities throughout the district or would involve disruptions because a plan would require grade level reconfigurations. It was as a direct result of these challenges and with the benefit of having additional insight into the spatial capacity at a couple of our schools, particularly at the middle school and the high school, as a result of the work with our consultant Doran Whittier, that I recommended to the Wildwood Building Committee that we explore an additional option that would be far from ideal, but perhaps could yield more benefits. Next slide. There are many problems with the current configuration of having the Wildwood split over three different schools that include the Shawshin, the West and the Woburn Street. Most importantly, this arrangement has impacted our staff tremendously and our students and families. Thanks to the unbelievable hard work to the staff, as well as Ms. Bissell, our principal at the Wildwood, things have worked, but they are not sustainable over the next five years until a new school facility can be built. The plan that is now underway, which has been highlighted a couple of times here this morning, and which can be finalized with the support of the related article, which happened earlier today, is to divide the Wildwood across two locations, immediately across the street from each other. That includes the West as well as the middle school. The plan includes at the West, housing five classrooms with approximately 75 to 80 students in pre-K and K. And at the middle school, there will be seven classrooms that currently planned with an approximate and anticipated enrollment of between 100 to 110. Next slide, please. This is an image of the lower level or the first floor of the middle school, which has been identified for the relocation of those students that I just mentioned in the portion of the Wildwood. And it highlights the area of the building that's planned for those seven classrooms as well as the use of the library media center. Resources from the library media center that are currently located there are being relocated to another part of the school so that the middle school students still can have access to them. And plans are underway to recreate that library media center that was in place at the original Wildwood School, where students will have access to library materials appropriate for their age and also receive instruction in art, music and the similar programming that they had at the Wildwood. The most significant cost associated with this project is to construct a set of age-appropriate bathrooms in a space that has been identified in, within room 155, for those that are taking a look at that image. Currently on each floor of the middle school, in case residents might be wondering, there is only one set of bathrooms. And those, of course, have to be used by students who are 12, 13 years old, something that's not appropriate, certainly, to co-mingle with students of the ages of three and four, sometimes five, for those students at the Wildwood. Next slide. With the benefit of time to further consider this plan, we believe there are numerous benefits, some of which were mentioned earlier today, to have this arrangement with the Wildwood being co-hosted at the West Intermediate School and the middle school. Most of these have been mentioned, so in the interest of time, I think I'll, I'll proceed. Next slide. There are indeed challenges. No plan, this plan that's far from bringing everyone back together under one roof is, is not ideal, but it should be pointed out that there are still some challenges with this. It still requires Wildwood staff to be split across multiple sites, the West and the middle school, but far better from the current arrangement that they're in right now. It does result in a, in some of the middle school staff, approximately six to eight, to need to travel from room to room to deliver their classes. Not ideal, but something that we believe can be sustained for these next number of years. It does create the need, as mentioned, for age-appropriate restroom facilities and the need for the relocation of the library media center also has been mentioned. Next slide. It is not lost upon my team or the school committee the fact that this proposed plan comes with costs, as has been mentioned a number of times this morning. But the costs associated with this project are indeed significantly less than the various other options that were identified, as mentioned earlier. And I believe it's equally important and worth noting that a return to the Wildwood School following the oil spill would most certainly have led to additional costs to the town and the residents in order to keep that facility running, which would be, or will be, as you'll see in just a moment, approximately five more years. Energy costs, replacement of a boiler system that certainly was in need, and repair of any other future roof and window leaks and other system failures that our Department of Public Buildings and Mr. Hooper has repeatedly warned about in the past. So where does that bring us for next steps? Next slide, please. Certainly to start, I want to thank Town Manager Hall, Mr. Hooper, Mr. McGoldy, for their continued support of the efforts around putting into place the pieces of this interim plan. Things are moving along and with the support coming out of town meeting today, we will be able to move forward with the bid documents related to the construction specifically for those restroom facilities and other costs necessary to bring about this plan to open school in the fall of 2023. Construction will indeed take a period of time that is planned for over the summer and it is scheduled to begin immediately when school lets out. And if things with that timeline can progress according to the timeline right now, we believe that indeed we'll be able to open school for Wildwood students and most certainly as well the middle school in the fall. So that is the interim piece of the Wildwood. And shifting, next slide, please, to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or MSBA. This is the second important project, as many are aware, unfolding concurrently with the Wildwood School. And that's this construction program that we are now a part of with the MSBA. And I should note, thanks to the incredible and overwhelming support of residents back almost a year ago on March 8th, 2022, that made it possible for us to move forward in this program. It's important, I believe as well, to take this opportunity to provide residents with a brief update on things as they really do begin to ramp up with this plan. Just first worthy note, the foundation of this current project really began a number of years ago as a result of the town's master plan that was completed in 2017, 2018. Of particular importance within that plan was the clear recommendation to the community of Wilmington and supported by the Facilities Master Plan Committee that school consolidation should be pursued in this town. Next slide. This recommendation makes complete sense and is grounded upon the key findings that were identified in the Facilities Master Plan that are associated with four specific factors that define the current state of our schools at the elementary level in town. First off, enrollment. The current enrollment within the elementary schools in Wilmington is not projected to significantly change within the planning horizon. However, with the exception of the middle school and high school, those schools are really at capacity and the, as a system, and they cannot easily adapt to short-term shifts in grade level enrollment. Second, transitions. As many know who have had children move through or are moving through the school system, we have a lot of schools in town. This is a lot of change for the town's youngest citizens and with those transitions, and certainly instability is hard and far less than ideal. Third, operating so, so many smaller elementary schools absolutely is not as efficient or optimal in terms of the operations of services on multiple levels. And fourth, perhaps, perhaps as equally important as all of the above, given the age of our elementary schools, which you can see on the slide here, while overall indeed well maintained by the town over these years, they simply are not built to support the needs of teaching and learning in current times. Anyone who has had a chance to visit a more contemporary school facility built within, say, the last five to 10 years can easily conclude that and see the differences in terms of what a newer school facility can provide. Next slide. It is directly because of this plan and these recommendations that the town and the school department signaled very clearly to the MSBA when applying that, that as a community, we want to explore and need to explore school consolidation as a possible solution to improve the conditions, not only for the Wildwood, but potentially other schools throughout the district. Should we be able to realize consolidation as a community, there will be a number of key benefits highlighted that include fewer schools in town, fewer schools that can accommodate more grade levels, minimizing our transitions. And all of our elementary schools with fewer buildings will lead to less time to complete repairs and/or renovations. There are a number of key partners in this project, and that's the good news associated with, of course, being in, in the MSBA project. It is a very big deal for any community indeed. This community knows that well through the process of partnering with MSBA in the construction of this facility. But we are in this place because of the support of residents and we have recently demonstrated to them that the high school that was built here indeed underscores the fact that Wilmington is a great partner on so many levels. And speaking of partners, this path that we are on now, at the beginning stages of this project, will only be possible and only be built around a number of key partnerships. And I just want to take a quick moment to highlight what these are as we get started with this project. Next slide. First, there is the Wildwood School Building Committee, with members noted here. Because of the fact that this project holds the potential to impact multiple school communities throughout the town, the careful and deliberate decision was made to ensure that we have much broader representation of stakeholders, including from both sides of town. Next slide. Second key partnership in this project is the town's owner, owner's project manager, or OPM. Working with the MSBA requires a very methodical process of ensuring that highly qualified firms apply for the various important roles in a school building project. Our first hire as a community was with our OPM. These are the folks that I want to thank for their many hours of work behind the scenes in reviewing applications and interviewing potential firms. A total of eight firms applied to serve as Wilmington's OPM for this project. Back in October, in late, late October, early November, SMMA was selected as the OPM for the Wildwood Project. Next slide. A third partnership just being formed, although not new to the town, is that of our project designer. In March, Mr. Ragsdale, Vice Chair of the School Committee, Mr. Hall and myself met with representatives from the MSBA Designer Selection Panel to review three proposals for the, to serve as the designer of the Wildwood Project. After interviewing and joint questioning with members of the MSBA Board, the firm Doran Whittier, who also was the designer of the high school that you now sit in currently, was selected for the project. Next slide. Our community at large, of course, is a key partner in such a project and it will be throughout. Not only will this ultimately include a future vote to fund a potential project, but far more engagement and opportunities for members of this community to get involved, should they wish, way before that time comes. The first and vitally important opportunity comes with what is called educational visioning. It is important that we think big and give as a community pause to develop our vision for what it is that we want for the Wilmington Public Schools and the future of schooling in Wilmington, particularly at the elementary level. in Wilmington, particularly at the elementary level. This will be big-picture thinking and provide an immense opportunity for us to think critically about where it is that we want to go as a community in the years ahead. Next slide. In our conversations with Doran Whittier last week, they made it clear to us that this process needs to get going very soon, and they, as well as our OPM, have strongly urged us to think strategically about where we can ensure stakeholders are included throughout the town. This slide represents current thinking around who we want on our educational visioning team. This will amount to a lot of work and certainly time and energy from the folks who agreed to sign up, but we will need them to be a part of this process, and an important one that will get underway very quickly. Please stay tuned for more information if you might be interested in it. This, I anticipate, that information, as soon as the end of next week, will be possible to invite people to get involved. Next slide. We are really on the ramp, the on-ramp now with this project, and I think that that's important to point out, and we are heading towards the feasibility study, the next up in the process that will occur in the spring and summer. Highlights of the work include a number of facets that will explore existing conditions throughout all of our elementary schools, explore the options that are going to be considered, including school consolidation, and identify possible building sites and locations if the Wildwood site currently is not deemed to be most appropriate. Next slide. This slide provides additional information about the feasibility stage or the module. This is the term that MSBA uses for this, and I will point out the last key bullet there on the slide. The culmination of this specific module will be the recommendation of the most cost-effective and educationally appropriate solution for the elementary population of Wilmington, which will be presented to the MSBA for consideration. Next slide. Next two slides provide just a really quick broad-brush overview of the process. These slides have been provided by Doran Whittier for us, provide you with an overview of the next number of months leading to when a new building is anticipated, which, as has been mentioned a few times, is expected to be in 2028. You can also see here that the local project funding for whatever is developed out of this process and is deemed most appropriate would be in December of 2024. This would be the next town meeting vote connected with this project. Next slide. Next slide, please. Lot of data, a lot of information on this slide, and I will, I should say, I certainly will make this PowerPoint available for anyone who is interested in it. It provides more detail, a lot of detail actually, here, but I did want to share it with you to highlight the fact that through this process, there will be also numerous public meetings planned. So even if a community member is not on the Wildwood Building Committee, or perhaps doesn't have the opportunity or ability to sign up to be a part of the visioning committee that I mentioned a moment ago, I think it's important to point out that there will absolutely be multiple opportunities for community members to provide input and feedback on what is being developed in this process. Your voice and your involvement counts, no matter whether you do or don't have children in the school system. Next slide. I'll close with this, which you all recognize that this is indeed a very big and very important project for the community that will also necessitate, of course, down the road, local financial support. But we want to do the best that we can to make sure that the members of our community can stay informed, should they wish, in this process. We have already established a strong presence on our district website where all of the related documents to the Wildwood projects, both of them, are being compiled, and that will continue with presentations, including this one today. Thank you for your time today, for your recognition of the importance of this project and the community need with the overwhelming support that you've provided a year ago, as well as your continued support through the project as we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. We have only our random draw articles left, as I had stated at the beginning of today's proceedings. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to recess for 15 minutes so people can get up and stretch. The Wilmington Public Schools Coral and Theater Support Group, CATS, is still selling refreshments in the cafeteria, so I have a motion to recess to 1:48, more or less. It has been seconded. All those in favor of taking a 15-minute break, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously.[884.43]
If you can make your way to your seats. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the remaining articles are all to be selected by random draw. They are Articles forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, and forty-seven. We will hear first on Article forty-one. Which is to see if the town will vote pursuant to Chapter sixty-four, Section sixty-four-one of the inhabitant bylaws to rename the second-floor conference room at the Wilmington Memorial Library, the Christina Stewart Room, and to have a sign installed to commemorate the same or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Nussbaum.
Mr. Moderator, Jeffrey Nussbaum, Eight Patches Pond Lane, and representing the Wilmington Memorial Library Board of Trustees. I move that the town vote pursuant to Chapter sixty-four, Section six-dash-one of the inhabitant bylaws, to rename the second-floor conference room at the Wilmington Memorial Library, the Christina Stewart Room, and to have a sign installed to commemorate the same.
Thank you, Mr. Nussbaum. I'll accept that as a main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded by about thirty-five people. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article forty-one. Discussion, Mr. Nussbaum.
On behalf of the Wilmington Memorial Library Board of Trustees, I would like to ask Town Meeting to name the library program conference room in honor of our library director, Christina Stewart. Mrs. Stewart is retiring after twenty-seven years as the dedicated and highly respected director of our town library. As a library trustee and a frequent library user, I think of the excellence Mrs. Stewart has fostered in our library and the many changes she has driven to keep the library more than relevant but essential to our town. The library has embraced technology with computers, internet services, and online programs. Mrs. Stewart has led multiple library makeovers, improving its use of limited space at limited cost to the town through donations, fundraising, and bequests. Under Tina Stewart's guidance, the library has become so much more than books, providing over a thousand programs each year on a wide range of interests for adults and children. As we engage in enthusiastic debate at Town Meeting, I'm reminded of the library's month-long set of programs on civility, where we learned to listen better and treat each other with greater respect. Through Mrs. Stewart's leadership, the library is a welcoming and friendly place for all. We thank Tina for her forty-nine years of service to the Wilmington Memorial Library and ask for your vote in support of this article. Thank you.
Further discussion on Article forty-one. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of renaming the second-floor conference room at the Wilmington Memorial Library, the Christina Stewart Room, on Article forty-one, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed, say no. Didn't think so. Unanimous. Next up is Article forty-seven. All right, Article forty-seven, to see if the town will vote to amend Section four-point-one-point-nine of the Wilmington zoning bylaw, which currently reads as, ladies and gentlemen, you'll see two different, Section four-point-one-point-nine, fair, bazaars, antique shows, and carnivals on the screen above me and in your warrant. The top one is as the zoning bylaws currently stand, and the bottom is as it is proposed to be amended as follows. You will note that on the fifth line in your warrant booklet, the words that start "special permit from the Board of Appeals Provided Such Uses," the amended version, or the version of this proposed to be amended, would strike "special permit from the Board of Appeals Provided Such Uses" with the words "the select board provided such use." Mr. Giroux.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patrick Giroux, nineteen Brattle Street. I move that the town will vote to amend Section four-point-one-point-nine of the Wilmington zoning bylaw, which currently reads as "four-point-one-point-nine, fairs, bazaars, antique shows, and carnivals."
Mr. Giroux, does the remainder of your motion read as it does in the booklet?
Yes, sir.
I will accept that as a main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee met just prior to today's proceedings. Mr. Dougherty, what is the Finance Committee's recommendation on Article forty-seven?
Disapproval.
Planning Board recommends approval of Article forty-seven. Discussion, Mr. Giroux.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have the great pleasure of chairing the Wilmington Fourth of July Committee, and I stand here today seeking support to modify the process in which fairs, bazaars, antique shows, and carnivals are permitted in the town. I am familiar with the town's current process for approving a carnival, and the measures both the town and Fourth of July Committee undergo to ensure a safe and fun annual tradition that many residents look forward to year after year. Annually, the committee meets with town officials to review the plans for the celebration. Attending this meeting are members of the Fire Department, Police Department, Department of Public Works, Health Department, Building Department, Town Manager, and more. It is at this meeting that any concerns about the conduct of the event are addressed. In addition to the planning and review, currently, an applicant needs approval from the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit in order to conduct a carnival on town-owned land. That board has the purview of approving the hours of operation and number of days of the carnival per Section four-point-one-point-eight of the town zoning bylaw. Finally, annually, the committee presents a request to the Select Board for use of the town common in the vicinity. That request details the days and hours of operation of the celebration. Our request is to modify and streamline the process to grant the permitting authority to the Select Board, which would conduct a hearing that the public could attend and participate in. Thank you.
Further discussion on Article forty-seven. Mr. Miller-Hugnay.
Paul Miller-Ronnie, one-seventy-six Middle Sixth Ave. Could the Finance Committee clarify why they want disapproval, and could we also hear from the Town Manager on this?
In discussions this morning, we're going through whether it be through an appointed board or elected board, and we found it would be more safer to go through an appointed board than an elected board. So, that's why.
Mr. Hall.
I think in either case, there's going to have to be the same level of due diligence. Certainly, in terms of the Board of Appeals, one of the distinctions is for a special permit, it requires a four-fifths approval, whereas I understand it if this was to be changed to approval by the Board of Selectment, it would require a majority vote. You know, other than that, I think, you know, the keys to whichever body is asked to authorize these types of events, there's going to be a requirement to be mindful of any butters and other issues that may impact either town departments or the surrounding area.
Further discussion on Article forty-seven. Ms. Neville.
Chris Neville, three Franklin Ave. I see eight members of the Finance Committee, five members of the Board of Selectmen. I know members of the School Committee are here today, all who volunteer their own time, put a lot of time into town politics, trying to do the right thing for the town of Wilmington. Pat Giroux is no exception. He spends countless hours running, I think, the Fourth of July Committee alone, he probably spends forty hours that week alone taking his own vacation time to help things run smoothly. I have complete and full trust in Pat's ability to make sure things are run correctly. We still have a governing board, the Board of Selectmen, that can make that decision as to whether or not what he's asking is fair and reasonable for the town. I really don't see how there can be any opposition to making sure this process that's been going on for thirty-five or more years.
How many years, Jack?
Forty-some-odd years. It's still going to be under the purview of the Board of Selectmen. If there are issues, it can be heard. I think this is a no-brainer. Thank you.
Further discussion on Article forty-seven. Mr. McCoy.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I support the young gentleman here, Mr. Giroux. I think it does come before the Board of Selectmen. You might as well keep it under one roof. It just makes perfect sense. I remember serving on the board for a long time, and I give credit to Mike Newhouse. At one time, I forget, the manager could help me. We were just about going to lose the opportunity ahead of Fourth of July. He had a great idea, and we imposed that, and the Fourth of July festivities did take place that year. And that was on the Board of Selectmen maybe a dozen years ago. So, it's under one roof. I think it's a great opportunity to make this change. I support it. It's just, it's a no-brainer. It makes common sense. Thank you.
Seeing no further comment on Article forty-seven, I will call it to a vote. If you are in favor of Article forty-seven passing, as written in the warrant booklet, to amend Section four-point-one-point-nine of the Wilmington zoning bylaw, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay. We are going to have to call for a standing vote. This does require a two-thirds majority, so I'm going to ask the tellers to take their places. majority, so I'm going to ask the tellers to take their places.
Yeah, it's right up in the corner.
All right, so if you are in favor of Article forty-seven passing, as written in the warrant booklet, so indicate by rising to your seats and displaying your purple voter card. All right, you can be seated. Thank you for your patience. If you are opposed to Article forty-seven passing, please rise in your seat and display your purple voter card.
Chris Murphy, five. Karen West, zero.
Chris Murphy was what?
Chris Murphy was five.
Karen West was zero. Zero?
Yeah. Lisa Florentine, zero. Beverly Dalton, zero. April Keaston, zero. And Global R, zero. Global R, zero. Zero. And then, zero, zero. Pat McKenna, McKenna, zero. Connie Carter, zero.
Ladies and gentlemen, the vote on Article forty-seven is as follows: one hundred in the affirmative, five in the negative, the measure passes. Next up is Article forty-two. Ladies and gentlemen, the subject property of Article forty-two is on a map on page twenty-three in your booklet. To see if the town will vote to authorize the transfer, the transfer or of the care, custody, management, and control of a certain parcel of land owned by the town of Wilmington here and after described to the selectmen of the town of Wilmington. Said land having been determined to be no longer needed for any municipal purpose and for the express purpose of conveying the same, all in accordance with Massachusetts' general laws, Chapter thirty-B, and further that the selectmen be and hereby authorize, declare, and convey such interest in the land as is owned by the town of Wilmington and for the express purpose of constructing a municipal turnaround for Polk Street, formerly Cedar Street, upon such terms and conditions as shall be determined by the selectman in accordance with Chapter three, Section sixteen of the bylaws of the inhabitants of the town of Wilmington revised. Said parcel and interest is described as a portion of Map Six Parcels thirty-three and thirty-four, more particularly described as lots two-hundred-eighty-one, two-hundred-eighty-two, two-hundred-eighty-three, two-thousand-two-hundred-eighty-four, as shown as a plan of land entitled Wilmington Gardens Edition, recorded with the Middlesex North Registry of Deeds Plan Book twenty-six, Plan Thirty-Six, and containing approximately ten-thousand square feet of land for the sum no less than five thousand dollars, or take any other action related thereto. Ladies and gentlemen, this article calls for the disposition of town-owned land as a condition precedent, a condition that needs to occur prior to affirmative vote on Article forty-two. The town would need to declare the land surplus to the needs of the town. Mr. Hall, what is your declaration of surplus?
This property is not declared surplus.
Okay, in that case, I would entertain a motion to pass over Article forty-two. The motion has been made and seconded. Discussion on the motion to pass over Article forty-two. We're on discussion. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of passing over Article forty-two, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. On Article forty-four. Article forty-four, to see if the town will vote to accept the following, that the Police Department Range and Firearms Training Facility located in North Wilmington on a parcel of town-owned land known as Abigail's Island be named the Officer Lawrence L. Redding Firearms Training Facility, Mr. Shalafar.
Paul L. Shalafar, forty-eight Hopkins Street. I would like to see if the town will vote to accept that the Police Department Range and Firearms Training Facility located at North Wilmington on a parcel of town-owned land known as Abigail's Island be named the Officer Lawrence L. Redding Firearms Training Facility. Larry Redding is a nineteen-sixty-four graduate of Wilmington High School.
Mr. Shalafar, does the remainder of your motion read as it does in the booklet?
It does, but I'd like to use that as the, as the content of my public remarks. Larry Redding is a nineteen-sixty-four graduate of Wilmington High School, a decorated U.S. Army Special Forces veteran of the Vietnam War, a former Massachusetts State Police Trooper, a retired Wilmington police officer, and a former longtime resident of the town. Officer Redding, during his tenure with the Police Department, was a fierce advocate of specialized training for police officers in the fields of tactics, officer safety, firearms, and physical fitness. He was instrumental in transitioning the Police Department from revolvers to semi-automatic sidearms in nineteen-eighty-six, one of the first departments in the Commonwealth to do so. The following year, he was the driving force in the department obtaining its first firearms range. Simultaneous to his time as a Wilmington police officer, he was also a decorated member of the Northeast Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council's Regional Tactical Police Force and a founding member of its Special Operations Unit. Officer Redding retired in nineteen-ninety-nine after suffering a traumatic line-of-duty injury in nineteen-ninety-seven that was brought about and exacerbated by a previous unrelated line-of-duty injury. This being done, in recognition of Officer Larry Redding's many years of dedicated service to the town, will take any action related thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Shalafar. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article forty-four. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote on Article forty-four. If you are in favor of renaming the Police Department Range and Firearms Training Facility located in North Wilmington on a parcel of land, of town-owned land known as Abigail's Island to be the Officer L. Redding Firearms Training Facility, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. Article forty-three. Article forty-three, to see if the town will vote to request the state legislature to authorize Joanne Riccadelli to have her results for the two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three Massachusetts Civil Service firefighter exam. Be allowed for employment without regard to the applicant's age as a firefighter in the town of Wilmington. Notwithstanding the provisions of the general laws, rules, and regulations to the contrary regulating the age of the applicant, provided she meets all other requirements, she shall be eligible for certification and appointed to the Wilmington Fire Department by the Appointment Authority, regardless of her age, or take any other action related thereto. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Joanne Riccadelli, eight Chapman Ave. Thank you for hearing me today. So, I am...
We do need to hear a motion, so if you start by saying, "I move that," and start reading your article, or just...
Yep, so, well, I'm here because I'm seeking the opportunity to join the Wilmington Fire Department. I would like to see if the town will vote to request a state legislator...
Does the remainder of your motion read as it does in the booklet?
Yes, it does.
There we go. Is there a second? Further discussion? Finance Committee recommends approval of Article forty-three. Ms. Riccadelli, apologize for interrupting. Continue.
Nope, I just wanted to say that I'm hoping that I have the opportunity to serve here. Thank you.
Further discussion on Article forty-three. Seeing none, a call for the vote. If you are in favor of Article forty-three, to request the state legislature authorize Joanne Riccadelli to have her results from the two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three Massachusetts Civil Service firefighter exam, be allowed for employment without regard to the applicant's age as a firefighter in the town of Wilmington, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed, say no. Voted, and unanimously so. Ladies and gentlemen, we've reached the last article. I thank you for bearing with us. We are on Article forty-five. Article forty-five, to see if the town will vote to amend the action taken under Article three of the special town meeting held on November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two to appropriate the sum of thirty-six million eight-hundred-eighty thousand seven-hundred-sixty-six dollars, more or less by reducing the overall approved funds by not less than one million five-hundred thousand dollars, reducing the total funds available to construct the Town Hall School Administration Building to thirty-five million three-hundred-eighty thousand seven-hundred-sixty-six dollars or less, or take any other action related thereto. There's been a motion to pass over, and I heard a second. Finance Committee recommends disapproval of Article forty-five. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. If you are in favor of passing over Article forty-five, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed, say no. Voted, and unanimously so. At this time, I would entertain a motion to dissolve our annual town meeting. Motion, motion has been made and seconded. No discussion on a motion to dissolve. All those in favor of getting out of here, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, say no. Voted.